When you start the video. Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand and twenty-three through January two thousand and twenty-four. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice that this meeting also has been posted on the municipal website, Princeton NJ, excuse me, Princeton NJ.gov slash calendar. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We'll have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capazoli?
Here.
Mr. Chow? Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Tex Zarni?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yep.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, announcements, uh, before we turn to Mr. Lesko, who I'm sure is ready to tell us about the master plan. I want to remind, remind the board that I think I've said this before in public session, I will miss the June first meeting. Um, uh, and Tim Quinn, uh, Vice Chair Tim Quinn will preside at that meeting and, um, so that's two weeks from now. Um, Justin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so for the master plan, we're finishing up testing out the next survey that'll go out online, a digital only survey. It will probably go out by Monday, potentially soft launch tomorrow and then, uh, start telling people about it Monday, just making sure we worked out all the kinks. If there are any, uh, groups that you belong to that you'd like me to send emails to, um, to just spread the word, that'd be very helpful. Uh, we had a lot of success last time with groups like, uh, the YWCA, Sustainable Princeton, Witherspoon Jackson Neighborhood Association, uh, that already had mailing lists that, uh, they were able to help us out with. So, uh, we're looking to do that again. Um, and then, uh, that's basically it for now, and then we'll have more opportunities in the future. With subcommittee meetings coming up in June, uh, potentially a virtual town hall that we're still figuring out. Um, that's been requested, uh, you know, uh, the last time that we went out and, and, uh, spoke with people. And then the open house that I described last time in September. So that's kind of what's on our, uh, our near to midterm future.
Okay. Um, any questions for Mr. Lesko or any other announcements from board members or staff? Uh, the record should note that Mr. Taylor is here. I think he
Thank you.
Called the roll. Hi, Jack. Um, okay, seeing no other announcements, um, let's move on to subcommittee reports. Do we have any tonight? I don't think that we do. Okay. Um, minutes. Uh, Carrie, um, help me out here. Are the November third minutes the ones that I did not have a chance?
That's correct. We're carrying that. We're carrying that to our next agenda.
Away until Monday and, or till Tuesday, actually, and I did not get a chance to give them my usual first pass. Um, so we're gonna, um, table those until the six. I, I have looked at them now, but not with enough time to give the board a chance to review them. So they will be the November third meeting, uh, minutes will be on the
June first.
Agenda.
Yes.
We do have, uh, revised minutes, um, that benefited from Mr. Cohen's comments from the October thirteenth meeting, which we briefly discussed last time. Um, would someone like to move those? Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. Taylor. Thank you. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, next up, we have some administrative business, the appointment of Planning Board Conflict Council, um, for this year. Um, Stephen Goodell, uh, with Parker McKay. Um, I guess this, this also requires a vote, so would some, someone like to move? Oh, Mr. Lesko, would you?
Sure. Would you like me to give just a brief description of what this is about?
Yes, please go.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so the Planning Board doesn't currently have a conflict council. Um, you know, in the case that, uh, Mr. Mueller or his firm have a conflict of interest with it, with an application. Um, we don't anticipate any, so this really isn't in response to any applications in the pipeline. Uh, but, you know, as a planning department and a planning board, it's, it's, we probably should be planning ahead, uh, in case that does happen. Um, so that's what this is about. Uh, uh, Mr. Stephen Goodell of Parker McKay was our last conflict attorney. I'm blanking right now on, on what year, uh, maybe two years ago. Uh, so we reached out to him and asked him for a proposal. Um, and that's what you saw on your packet. If the board decides to move forward with, uh, Parker McKay as the conflict counsel, um, I will then bring it to municipal council, um, and get a resolution there to fund, basically.
Right. Yeah, if, if we should need his services. Right, okay. Thanks, Justin, for that. Little bit of background. Anyone like to make a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that Parker McKay be assigned as conflict counsel.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. I saw Mr. O'Donnell's hand up too, so
I will second.
Take that as a second. Good. Um, Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, certainly. Ms. Capazoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Zarni?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Uh, Jack, you're on mute.
Yes.
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, next up, we have an application and hearing from the trustees of Princeton University. This is preliminary and final major site plan for the Eric and Wendy Schmidt Hall, Washington Road and Geo Lane, block forty-five point zero one, lot one oh one. This is file number P twenty-two twenty-two dash two-three-five P slash C O. And, um, folks might remember, we, uh, looked at this as a concept plan, um, a few months ago. Mr. Mueller?
Yes, um, Madam Chair, uh, notice is proper and, um, Carrie, can you confirm that, uh, proof of publication and service is in order?
Everything is in order. Yes.
The board therefore has jurisdiction.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. Bodikheimer advised that he's in conflict with the university, so at this time, sir.
Well, not, not
That's not quite.
No?
I have issues from time to time.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I am so sorry.
That's a, yeah, I'm sorry, Terry. I mean, Carrie, um, no.
Whatever my state of mind.
I hope my laughter wasn't, uh, just too, uh, insulting or whatever, but yeah, Mr. Bodikheimer has been informed he should recuse himself. Um,
Yes, so whatever my state of mind, I will be absenting myself.
No, no direct, uh, conflict as in hostility. Okay, um, thanks, Mr. Bodikheimer. Are you gonna sign off or would you rather?
I'm gonna sign off.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. DeGrazia? Or I'm sorry, I'm sorry. First, I should turn to Mr. Dobramilsky, um, who is our consulting planner, um, uh, and has been on this project even when it was presented as a concept plan. So let me ask staff, uh, first, Mr. Dobramilsky, and then any other staff if they wanna uh, raise anything before we turn to the university for its presentation. Dan?
And then let me, let me first swear in, uh, Dan and the other, uh, board professionals. If everyone who's here could raise their hand, that would be Dan, Derek, Victor, anybody else?
Dan Weisman?
Is Dan Weisman here?
Yep.
Yes, he is.
Joe Scoopian.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
I do.
So, so I wanna for, or affirm, just if, if each of you can please say your full name for the record.
And Dobramilsky?
Derek Bridger.
Dan Weisman.
Vic Thomas CK. Joe Scoopian.
And, and you raise your hand also, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm gonna share my screen, uh, and offer a quick, uh, overview and planning, uh, analysis for this, uh, to take as an introduction.
Thanks, Dan.
Um, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
So, uh, this is, this is, um, if I get it to not turn green. This is one of the sheets from the plan set, uh, sheet C uh, one oh one, it looks like. Um, so the location of this project, um, this is Washington Road, if you can see my cursor going uh, up the middle of the screen, uh, Nassau Street at the top, and this, you see Schmidt here. This is the location of this project, uh, below First Campus Center, um, in the Health Center, uh, the stadium is over in this location here. Um, so the existing, I'm gonna switch to this screen, okay? And so in this view, these three, this is sheet, uh, five oh one from the plan set, the architectural plan set. And Washington is on the right side of the image oh one in this location here. Uh, so, th- this application's request in preliminary final site plan approval for the proposed construction and reconstruction of a building to create a new home for the Computer Science Department and other, uh, departments or areas of learning. The facility will be known as Eric and Wendy Schmidt Hall. Uh, the proposed use and bulk dimensions are conforming to the zone standards. However, the application does require confirmation of conformance with a conditional use standard, and some variance or variances have been requested for the number of signs, which is three as, uh, one which is permitted. The proposal will include the renovation of the, and expansion of the existing, and hopefully I say this right, is it GAT Hall? Is that correct?
Yeah.
D O.
So Geo Hall, which in this, um, image three here, is this building at the back of that, uh, complex here. The new construction will create a rectangular structure connecting Geo Hall to be renovated and expanded slightly, and existing Schultz and Moffett laboratories with a new central courtyard. So, uh, some of these buildings out the back here will be demolished, some of them will be renovated, um, and there will be a, a new if this is the plan view in the architectural plan sheet six oh one. So in this view, the Geo Hall is at the top, and you can see some of the buildings that are gonna be demolished in light, and the proposed building here and here to create a courtyard in the middle. Um, the existing tower and facade of Geo Hall to the north will not be altered, but interior accessibility modifications will occur. The west side of the building will front on diagonal walk, which will be reconstructed in this location to create accessible connections and fire access. Primary entrance to the new building will occur south connecting to Goheen Walk. The east side of the building is bounded by Washington, as we said, um, which would be over in this location here. The renovation portion of the project involves a hundred, one hundred thousand, two hundred fourteen square feet and retains key existing interior spaces. The new construction is approximately a hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred forty-two square feet of building area. Conditional use approval is sought pursuant to code section seventeen A, three forty-seven B one due to a slight exceedance of the building height seventy uh, and seventy feet and five and a half inches versus sixty feet. The conditional use provisions allow for limited tower height up to a hundred thirty feet for buildings if prescribed offsets are adhered to and the building volume is not increased under the code, as described under the code. An exhibit has been provided demonstrating compliance with the conditional use fairness, conditional use standards, and the zoning officer has confirmed applicability subject to the criteria and standard set forcing the conditional use authorization. The building bulk seems to be consistent with other buildings, nearby buildings, and active construction. This conceptual new construction will be set back a considerable different distance, and thus will not be really visible from Washington Road. The applicant, uh, is asked to provide detailed testimony regarding all these aspects of the proposal, and, uh, the commentary offered by the joint report of the Municipal Land Use Engineer and the zoning officer, there's some commentary in their report that the applicant should, is being asked to, or my vision suggests they, um, address. The, regarding the signs, three building identification signs of about fourteen and square feet or less each are proposed, whereas one sign at sixteen square feet is permitted. The applicant is indicated that in the context of the scale of these buildings or facades, the extra number of signs will not present a sus- stamp, substantial detriment to the public good or impair the intent of the proposed master plan, purpose of the master plan. It is indicated that the signs are necessary to facilitate building identification and wayfinding on the campus college. Um, in analysis, these signs seem to be very simple and practical in style, design, and placement, as well as aesthetics, if at the scale and context of the design. The additional signs will not present an excessive appearance and seem appropriate to promote visual identification and destination finding for students, staff, service providers, visitors, and emergency responders. I do not see that the signs will provide any type of visual nu- nuisance as viewed from streets or uses outside of the campus. Thus, I believe it is a reasonable finding that the granting of the request to relieve will outweigh any public, uh, any, uh, potential detriment. The applicant should provide, uh, planning testimony with regard to those requirements. Getting to the site design, uh, there are existing four parking stalls and a drive uh, for a loading area at the existing facility, which will, will be removed. However, the applicant has indicated that the parking needs, including accessible parking, have been accounted for in the design capacity for the stadium garage and the campus paths and transportation system to provide access to this building. Refuse and delivery services will be addressed via existing and enhanced routes. Um, the pedestrian routes and bicycle parking will be significantly enhanced with the new construction and connections. Bicycle parking will include forty interior and a hundred nineteen exterior stalls or spaces. Uh, the, the applicant is asked to provide detailed testimony regarding these aspects, and there, there is some, uh, commentary or questions from your traffic engineer or consultant, uh, regarding, uh, the parking and access and the deliveries. So, uh, hopefully the testimony can address those questions. Uh, the applicant is provided, uh, indicated that the existing stormwater management system will accommodate this project. However, the new landscape shall include, uh, several small-scale green infrastructure elements as an enhancement. Um, the applicant should describe these features, and the municipal stormwater management consultant has provided a memo uh, with some comments, and hopefully those address, comments can also be addressed in the testimony. There are no environmental constraints, nor historic scenic or archaeological landmark site or designations for this property. The landscape architectural design presents a very informal, organic design that will include elements in association with the existing buildings to remain, as well as new outdoor spaces, walks, furnishings, and plantings in the area of new construction. The proposed new courtyard, landscape spaces will replace structures, as we saw in the other images, and hardscape areas with functional outdoor spaces. The landscape architectural design is consistent with other recent campus projects, integrating the new and existing structures while enhancing the function and aesthetics of the area of the camp, this area of the campus. Um, citing the new construction predominantly within the footprint of existing structures to be removed, re- will reduce or limit existing tree removal. The proposed tree planting sixty-one new trees will exceed and mitigate the required tree removal. However, the plans, uh, sheet L one oh one and L one oh two offered data regarding tree removal that needs to be clarified. That the chart has suggested fifteen or sixteen trees be removed from the project, yet in other locations, they're indicating twenty-nine trees will be removed for this project, and it says a utility project, so there's some clarification required on that. So that is a summary of the project and my, uh, testimony regarding the planning, uh, issues and landscape architecture. If there's any questions, I'm free to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Um, any questions for Dan? Not seeing any hands go up. Um, and are there, uh, any issues that other municipal representatives wanna raise, um, before Princeton, um, presents? Mr. Weisman, hi.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. Um, I just wanted to, uh, provide one point of clarification, uh, regarding the proposed stormwater management system. It does require a design waiver from the, uh, Stormwater Management Ordinance. Just as a point of clarification, the NJDEP, uh, in their regulations refers to, uh, a, a design waiver from their standards as a variance. So you may hear both referred to, but it's not a zoning variance. In that sense, it's simply a design waiver from the ordinance. Um, the stormwater quantity control measures for this project use the same system that was previously approved under the university health services system. That system also required the same design waiver, uh, from the green infrastructure standards of the ordinance. Uh, in order to grant this waiver, a mitigation plan is required and has been provided by the applicant. Um, the details of the mitigation plan do require some further clarification and modifications. Uh, staff has met with the applicant to discuss some of these clarifications. Uh, there are notes provided in the, uh, municipal stormwater management consultant's report as to some of the details of this, um, and if this project does proceed, staff would suggest that as a potential condition of approval, the applicant continue to work with municipality, uh, to revise the mitigation plan, and we would also request that the mitigation plan be deemed compliant prior to the adoption of the resolution. It's, it's a slight nuance, but the MS four permit, uh, would require that to be deemed compliant prior to the adoption of the resolution.
Great, thank you. Got that, Jerry? You're, you're on mute. Mr. Taylor?
Let me just say, Christopher, I know we haven't gotten to you yet, but you have any problem with what Dan, uh, just laid out in terms of conditions?
Not at all.
Okay, good, thank you.
Jack, did you have a question?
Well, just, just a general comment. I, I found the, the overall presentation and particularly staff commentary very helpful, extremely detailed in many respects, though, complex from my perspective to grasp. And I look particularly at stormwater management, and it seemed to me that we were dealing with an unusually complex structure. And I'm not talking alone about the, the organizational framework, but I guess what I'm, what I'm really dealing with in my own mind is whether there is any, i- is this as complex and unusual as it appears to me? And are we comfortable with the approach that's being taken? It was hard for me to understand as I went through it, and I tried very conscientiously to grasp the detail.
Okay, well, I, I, it's a fair point to bring up, and we'll ask, uh, that the applicant be sure to explain it in in some detail and be prepared to ask, uh, follow-up questions if, uh, if they don't make it clear enough.
Well taken.
Mr. Taylor, we've, we put together some slides specifically on stormwater management.
Good.
Consultant will take you through.
I look forward to that.
Explain the details.
Great. Okay. Uh, any other comments from staff or from board members before we hear from the university? Okay, um, Mr. DeGrazia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, for the record, I'm Christopher DeGrazia from the law firm Figury, Drinker, Viddle, and Reed, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, first, let me thank, uh, Mr. Dobramilsky and Dan Weisman for their very detailed account and introduction, which sort of makes my job very easy. We've prepared a very detailed, um, presentation for you this evening. Um, as Mr. Dobramilsky said, we're here for preliminary and final site plan, conditional use approval, and a variance related to the number of signs. And it's in connection with the renovation and expansion of Geo Hall. And just to refresh your recollection, we spoke about this at the concept, but it really is going to serve as a unified home for the Computer Science Department, the Center for Statistics and Machine Learning, the Center for Information Technology, uh, Policy, and the Princeton Institute for Computational Science and Engineering. Has a, a number of really interesting and positive elements from sustainability down to aesthetics. And I'm not gonna do another introduction again, but, um, what I would like to do is turn it over to, um, university architect Ron McCoy to start our presentation. But before that, I think it would be, it makes sense to have our witnesses sworn in, Mr. Mueller?
Yeah. Yes. If, if all of, uh, the university's witnesses, uh, can raise a hand?
And if you would also activate your cameras, I see everybody, I think everybody's doing that. Yeah.
Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give me the truth?
I do.
You.
Okay, so everybody can go around or whatever, what do you want, um, and state your full name for the record?
I'll, I'll start. I'll start. Uh, Ron McCoy, university architect, M C C O Y. Let's go to, uh, Mark Gabriel.
Mark Gabriel, uh, niche engineering, and it's M A R C G A B R I E L. I will fix that on my video frame.
Thanks, Mr.
Yeah.
Uh, Stone?
Uh, Stone Besho James, gonna hear the patients, uh, P E S S H O.
Charlie?
Charlie Tennyson, Director for Transportation and Parking. Last name is T E N N Y S O N.
Stuart?
Uh, Stuart Gordon, uh, with WSP, G O R D O N. Last name?
Mark Vicente?
Uh, my name is Mark Vicente. I'm a Princeton University Project Manager.
Ben?
I'm Ben Patrick. I'm with, uh, Princeton University with the Office of University Architect.
I think that's us.
That's it.
And, um, just let the record show, Mr. Mr. Patrick's last name is P E T R I C K. I at first heard it as Patrick, and then I looked and it's Patrick, and so I just wanna make sure we get it right in the minutes.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, so our first witness this evening is university architect Ron McCoy. Um, he was just sworn in. Mr. McCoy is a licensed architect, one of the things, he's a licensed architect in New Jersey. He has a valid license.
Um, and he uh, we would like to present him also as a professional architect in addition to his testimony and presentation outside of that field.
I I think we can accept Mr. McCoy's qualifications without going through them. Um, i- if if that's all right with you, Mr. Muller, I I don't want to short circuit, but Mr. McCoy has testified before us many times, and we certainly accept his qualifications.
Yeah, I think it's okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, I would also like to mark two exhibits into evidence. The first one will be our PowerPoint presentation. This was sent over to the municipality. Um, it is sixty-eight slides, so we can mark that as A one. Our PowerPoint presentation, and it includes sixty-eight pages. Mr. McCoy will or other witnesses will reference the pages as they go through or the number on the slide as they go through the presentation. Um, before before he gets started, I also like to mark into evidence A two, which was a point-by-point response report that we submitted to the municipality at the same time to go through the um the staff and committee reports so that it has the details. We'll go through and provide the testimony this evening. But um to the extent you want to take a look at some of the questions that were raised and our responses, we've outlined those and provided those earlier this week as well. So that's A one and A two, Mr. Muller.
Yep.
Okay. Um, Mr. McCoy.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I will launch the presentation and get right to it. One second. You can see this, I trust?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, well, it's a pleasure to be here to uh uh present the Eric and Wendy Schmidt Hall. Um, we have um as usual, a detailed presentation. I'll try to go through it succinctly. This presentation and the written responses to staff uh reports should provide uh answers to the questions that have been asked. Um, and then we'll obviously, you can interrupt me at any point during the during the presentation if you if there's some clarification that's sought. And we can have a discussion at the end and further clarify any questions that there may be. Um, so this is the agenda. We're going to talk a little bit about uh the first uh context, the site and the stormwater, then the building and sustainability. And we'll provide, as I said earlier, uh some additional testimony throughout our presentation. I'll be joined tonight in the presentation by Stone Beschu, who will talk about landscape as the licensed architect with James Corner Field Operations and Mark Gabriel with niche engineering. We're gonna begin with uh campus context, and we're gonna begin with the the value proposition. Uh, this is, but we're sharing with you the way we think about and conceive and develop all of our projects, which is a promise to ourselves about what we're going to deliver. This has already been touched upon that we're creating a vibrant new home for uh computer science and computational thinking understood broadly at Princeton. The facility will support critical needs and support the work of Princeton's rapidly growing computer science department as well as homes for the Center for Information Technology Policy, Center for Statistics and Machine Learning. Uh, the Princeton Institute for Computational Science and Engineering. Currently, all of these programs are located in some parts of twelve different buildings around campus. So the opportunity to bring them together into a single home is a significant, significant strategic opportunity for us that's represented by this project. The building itself honors the legacy of Geo Hall uh in the original collegiate authentic Gothic architectural design, while modifying the interior space to serve scholars from around Princeton and beyond. Uh, computer science at Princeton has grown to become the largest undergraduate major with approximately twenty-five percent of our students majoring or earning a certificate in the discipline. Around sixty percent of undergraduates enroll in the introductory to computer science course. We expect this in the current generation to be even more popular and more demanding. Uh, the project does accommodate the growth of forty-nine additional faculty between now and twenty thirty-six. Um, these this faculty increase was anticipated when we did the design for the stadium parking garage. And there's no uh impact to that assessment at this point, and there's obviously no parking is on site. It's a campus-wide system, and Charlie Tennyson can respond to any questions about that. Slide five. Sorry, Jerry, I forgot to announce the slides. So we're in slide five. Um, and we're, we have a campus plan here with a red circle around uh Geo Hall. Um, this is something, this is a drawing from the twenty twenty-six campus plan. It identified Geo at that time as an opportunity site for academic use. It was not at that time designated for computer science. But uh as we began to think about the future of C's and computer science more specifically, we saw this opportunity to uh to locate uh this home for computational thinking at the heart of the campus just south of the first campus center and leading serving as a gateway to the east to the new neighborhood for environmental studies and the School of Engineering. So it provides a a critical link and a central home to the School of Engineering right at the center of the campus. Now I'm on slide six. This is another diagram of the neighborhood in light pink is the current generation of facilities that you see that we're developing all along what we call the east-west connector, which goes to the east uh to the west, out to the graduate college to the east, out to the new neighborhood for environmental studies and School of Engineering. This this new connector will go through Hobson College, which is labeled number three. Go just to the north of the new UHS facility, which is labeled number four, right in front of uh Schmidt Hall, number five, and out to the east. You'll see the uh yellow arrows north and south that that sort of feed into this uh new east-west connector. So this really becomes a very, very uh important central spine uh to the university. Now I'm on slide seven, which is another diagram of some of the key pedestrian network around the building. And I want to point out that the primary pedestrian um edges of the facility are the north, the west and the south. And it's on these edges that you'll see that we've developed the accessible entrances uh to the building. Slide eight is a transition slide as we're going to talk about the site on slide nine. Mr. Doblemilsky showed some of these images in his comments. Um, this uh uh shows the existing building. We're removing about fifty-eight thousand square feet of labs uh that are being relocated. Those lab spaces are being relocated to the new development of environmental studies and School of Engineering on Ivory Lane and Western Way. This removal is an opportunity to actually um provide um uh a chance to reclaim the beauty of the south facade of Geo Hall. Geo Hall was designed by uh the architectural firm of Parish and Schrader in nineteen oh nine. Interestingly, the original design for Geo Hall was envisioned to be a large four-sided quad with a central courtyard. And in fact, that four-sided quad with a central courtyard is what we're able to restore or reclaim uh through this through this project. Now on slide ten, this is a more uh detailed site plan. Um, and you'll see that this is the uh the quad is created. There's an upper terrace and a lower terrace uh to that quarter roof terrace and a courtyard garden to that. And I'll talk about that um in a little bit, but these are enabled by removing those middle wings. Um, we're also removing the driveway and asphalt that were part of that central space. We're also able to create a new landscape to the west between Schmidt Hall and the new health services building, removing parking and and a driveway that was there before, so removing a lot of asphalt in that area. And as I pointed out a minute ago, this circulation of network, network of circulation around the building allows us to create accessible entrances at the north, the west and the southwest corner of the facility. Accessibility will be provided, enhanced accessibility will be provided on the east part of the site. But that's part of a later project related to some Washington Road enhancements that we have and that we've been in discussions with the municipality about. Slide eleven is just another uh site plan that identifies the different uh specific landscape areas that surround the site. Mr. Doblemilsky touched on this a little bit in his comments, but there's a specific entry plaza to the north, which faces the south side of uh first campus center. There's the uh level one entry terrace, which is at the same level as the north entrance, so one could pass through the building and go from the north terrace to the entry terrace with an accessible route. Uh, the level B courtyard, level B is a level that connects to Goheen Walk to the south and the southwest corner. And on the west side, uh and a part of that, what we call the diagonal walk, which goes up to the art museum and to the northwest corner of campus. That sort of bends around this part of the of the site, provides an accessible entrance and also provides at its southern portion, a uh uh emergency parking and ADA parking for the health services building and also a segment of the fire access lane that feeds off of uh the driveway to the to the south. Uh, slide twelve is a detail of that vehicular access. Um, as I said, at this southeast corner of the health services building labeled UHS here, that is where the ADA parking space and the ambulance parking space are provided. So you see the red arrow that comes out lower Gil Lane and connects to Washington Road. That becomes the vehicular access to those parking spaces. From Goheen Walk to the north is the required uh fire uh vehicular fire access. At the southeast corner of Lewis Thomas Laboratory is a loading dock. We pause and explain that a little bit how the functionality of that loading dock. There were some questions in staff reports about how waste is handled through this complex. And I must admit, we didn't uh fully describe it. There is an underground tunnel from Moffett and Schultz connected to circulation corridors uh in the in the uh uh B level of Schmidt that connect to that tunnel and then connect to the loading dock at uh Lewis Thomas. This tunnel network actually goes further south, connects to the loading dock at Icon. It goes further south and connects to the loading dock at neuroscience and uh uh psychology, but it's the loading dock at Lewis Thomas that will become the loading dock that serves the waste needs for uh the Schmidt Hall complex. And we will manage those waste needs by by modifications of the operational strategy for managing the loading dock at Lewis Thomas. Now on slide thirteen, this slide is a little bit busy, but it shows the primary pedestrian circulation. Uh, as I think I've pointed out, uh, there's a, there's a sort of network of circulation paths around the buildings. On the next slide, I'll talk about the accessibility wherever you do see a o- orange uh circle here. Those are parts of the network that have a stair connection. But wherever there is a stair, there's also an equally equitable accessibility pathway to the main entrances of the building. Now I'm on slide fourteen that shows those accessibility pathways. In blue is everything that has a slope of less than five percent. So it it's an accessible path that does not need railings. The dark blue dashed pathways are pathways with a slope uh greater than five percent, but are still idiot compliant, and they will need um railings. And then the the sort of uh orange or yellow, yellow dash line, those are non-compliant uh uh idiot pathways, uh non-compliant pathways. Now, there was also, there are also staff comments that were uh very helpful and very accurate at the northeast corner of the site where the crosswalk crossing Ivy uh Ivy Lane meets the western curb along Washington Road. We had stranded uh uh those with accessibility needs on a platform there, and there were only stairs uh from that point on. Uh, although we have imagined uh and would propose in a future project to 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 turn the intersection into a scramble with a dedicated pedestrian face, we realized that uh that that uh condition of of bringing uh pathway to an un- inaccessible route is is not the right way to do it. So we're proposing to add a pathway parallel to Washington Road immediately uh at the curb line north-south from where that southern crosswalk meets the site and goes up to meet the uh the accessible pathway, this blue route here. So that is something that we picked up uh as a result of the comments from staff. And we would address that in the uh as a as a condition of approval and in the compliance set. So we can come back and talk about this if there if there's any questions or comments later or or now if anyone has a question.
And and Ron, on the uh east side of Washington Road, our goal in the future, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, the east side of Washington Road will uh take what are currently a network of pathways that are not fully ADA compliant and will uh renovate them, rebuild those so that there's full ADA uh accessibility on the east side of Washington Road, going all the way from Ivory Lane here down to uh the new Meadows neighborhood on the other side of the lake. Okay, we can come back if there's any questions. Now I'm on slide fifteen, which shows bicycle accessibility, which pretty much follows uh those ADA pathways. And you can see there's bicycle accessibility to the bicycle uh parking facilities on the north, the northwest, the west, the southwest surrounding the building. And Stone will get into the the details of the bike parking when he gets to his facility, when he gets to his slides. Uh, you'll see also on this slide, the multiple entrances to the building. Let me actually come back one slide to slide fourteen. I want to point out that there are two existing towers that are part of the, oops, part of the historic building uh on the north facade of Geo. Those towers currently are not ADA compliant. They have a couple steps up to the front door. And then once you get into the door and each one, you're confronted with a lobby with stairs. We're taking the northeast tower and renovating that northeast tower to provide us, we're we're raising the level of the ground, so there's not a step up to the door. And immediately when you come in the the vestibule at that northeast tower, there'll be an accessible route that takes you into the commons of the building. So that's how we're handing accessibility in this historic condition. Uh, the other entrances on the on the west and the southwest are uh fully, those are the primary entrances which are accessible. There were also comments in that staff report about the accessibility of this entrance at level B, uh which is is not currently accessible and will not be accessible. That's really a secondary entrance. It's not a primary entrance, so all the primary entrances will be accessible except, and that one's a secondary entrance. Okay, back to slide fifteen in the bicycle network. I think I've talked about that and all the entrances. Uh, slide sixteen. Uh, slide sixteen uh talks about uh is a transition to landscape, and I'm going to hand it off here to to Stone. Let me just say one thing. When when Stone talks about bicycle parking, I want to make sure that uh there were some comments in the staff report about uh about uh uh some interpretations of the code with with calculations for bicycle parking required for the site. I want to just say that the university will comply with uh section ten B dash two eighty-two point two uh paragraph C, but we will do it with the aggregate campus-wide requirements, which which specify a a point for bike parking space per faculty member, staff member, student, and has has exceptions for the dormitories. So that's the part of the code that we're we're complying with. We're not uh compliant with each individual building as we go along. However, uh you'll see that we've dramatically increased in our bike parking spaces on the site. So Stone, I'll let you pick it up here.
Great, thank you, Ron.
And.
Yeah, we need, we we need to, yeah.
Yeah, you've been, you've been sworn in.
All right, yes.
I would like to get you qualified. So can you go through your education and your license, please?
Sure. Uh, so my name is Don Bescho. Uh, I'm a senior associate at James Connect Field Operations. Uh, I have a bachelor of agriculture from University of Tokyo and a master of landscape architecture from University of Pennsylvania. Uh, I've been practicing landscape architecture over fifteen years, and I'm registered in New Jersey and also in Pennsylvania.
And you've testified before this board before?
Yes.
And your license is in good standing?
Standing in New Jersey, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We we accept your qualifications.
Great, uh, thank you, uh, and good evening, everyone. Uh, so as Ron just mentioned, so I will walk you through the proposed landscape design in details. So I'm on the slide seventeen uh diagram showing the proposed paving materials. So as you can see, the majority of the paths around the building will be exposed aggregate concrete, which is shown as a a light orange, and this concrete finish is actually matching the one for the adjacent projects as well as the other projects around the campus to provide the material continuity with the rest of the campus. And the paving at the prominent spaces such as the entry plaza in the north and then south of the building and the courtyard and the terrace will be paved with concrete unit paper uh which is shown as a dark blue and a purple to make these, you know, areas distinguished from the others. And the outdoor biking uh bike parking spaces uh will be paved with gravel, which is shown as a brown. And the fire lane uh west of the building uh will be paved with the uh exposed aggregate concrete along with the uh cobblestone strips on both sides uh in order to break up the uh wide space. And you know, and to make the the path look more like a pedestrian pathway uh instead of the typical fire lane. Next, please. Uh, slide eighteen, uh highlighting the proposed paving materials that are porous, uh including the uh concrete unit paving in blue uh and the gravel paving in brown. And we will discuss, you know, how these porous pavement will contribute to the stormwater management uh later in the presentation. Next, please. Uh, slide nineteen, site furnishing. So uh most of the proposed furniture is uh universal. Uh slide nineteen site furnishing. So uh most of the proposed furniture is uh university standard, including bench. Movable table and chair, I don't duck chair and fresh recycling receptacles. Uh for the uniformity through the campus and but for the courtyard and then. The terrace, you know, which is more private space, uh we are proposing more unique furniture. Uh including the semi-custom benches, the the round table around the tree. And the ping pong table, you know, for students and faculty to have fun and to activate the space. Uh next, please. Uh slide twenty uh bike parking and stretch. So uh we are basically providing uh one hundred fifty-six uh new bike parking spaces. And forty-two out of the one hundred fifty-six spaces are in the interior as shown uh with a green dot. Uh at the southwest corner of the new building. And the uh one hundred sixteen outdoor spaces are distributed through the site. Uh mainly by each building entrance for ease of use. And also, you know, there are also uh fifty-six existing biking, a bike parking spaces south of the building. Which will be uh remaining and they should be able to be utilized by the building users. Uh next, please. Uh slide twenty-one, uh moving on to the planting. This slide is showing a summary of the tree preservation and removable. So there were thirty-nine existing trees within the project site. And you know, we worked hard to minimize the number of trees to be removed. And with that effort, we will be preserving ten trees. Including uh the very large uh historical honey locust located north of the building. Yes, that one. And going over the other numbers, uh we are removing uh nine trees for the Schmidt Hall project. Which requires nine tree replacement as part of the time ordinance. And we have already removed or will be removing seventeen trees for the utility project. Which requires eighteen tree replacement. And just to clarify the trees to be removed, I just mentioned there are over eight inch DBH uh which, you know, require three replacement. Uh and but I'm not not including smaller trees, which we don't have to take into account for the uh three ordinance calculation. So overall, uh twenty-seven tree replacement is required for both either Schmidt Hall project and in the UDT project. Uh next, please. So slide twenty twenty-two, uh so moving on to the proposed planting. Uh as I just mentioned, the overall tree replacement number is twenty-seven. And we are uh proposing sixty-one trees, you know, much more than the required. And uh and I just want to point out that three out of sixty-one trees are not native. Uh they are stem magnolia. So. We choose this species uh because stem magnolia and you know, other non-native magnolia like Sosa magnolia. Have been uh used extensively through the campus. And they are part of the campus landscape. So we wanted to inherit the history by specifying them. But in a very limited quantity, you know, being mindful of how important it is to use native species. And uh in addition to those sixty-one trees, we are proposing about six hundred shrubs. And the fifty thousand grasses and perennials. The the site is relatively small, you know, compared to other university projects, but we are putting lots of plants to make the. Open space or and within the the building lush and green. Uh next, please. So uh slide twenty-three, the this slide showing a part of the proposed tree species. Canopy shade trees here, including maple, speak um duty poplar, black, um yellow and oaks. Next, please. Slide twenty-four, uh continuing to show the proposed tree pilot uh flowering trees here. Including service berry, uh red bud, dog good and French tree. Next, please. And slide twenty-five showing the rest of the tree species are increasingly verberage, stuff of rust and magnolias. And as you can see, the proposed tree species are very diverse. Uh we are proposing about twenty different species. Which can create, you know, visually uh very rich and at the same time is this resistant tree scape. Next, please. Uh slide twenty-six, uh moving on to the shrub planting. Uh shrub pilot uh includes the uh butter brush, uh sorry, butter brush back guy and oak leaf hydrant and so on. Uh next, please. Slide twenty-seven, uh continuing to show the shrub palette, uh including mountain laurel, zelia, rodendron and so on. And in these trees and shrub species were selected to provide seasonal interest uh through the year. With foliage, flowers, various branches and such, and also define the external spaces and outdoor rooms uh around and within the building. Next, please. Uh slide twenty-eight, uh moving on to the ground cover planting. Uh it's a mix of grasses, perennials and fronds uh which can provide various textures and colors through the seasons. And it's not just the two-dimensional green, you know, that covers the ground like a carpet. But it is more like a three-dimensional and it creates the atmosphere and then make each outdoor space uh very unique. And most of these species actually go dormant during the winter time, uh which makes the ass is no changes are very dramatic. Uh next, please. Uh slide twenty-nine. So we will discuss stormwater management in details uh in a bit, but here's a diagram showing the uh uh. Rain gardens proposed through the site. And these rain gardens are not always wet, uh they're wet only after the rain. And sometimes get pretty dry. So we selected the uh the plants that can take both uh wet and dry conditions. And at the same time, that can provide visual and texture interest, including perennials and fronds shown uh here. Next, please. But I think that's it from me.
Yes, thank you. So we're going to move to stormwater management and Mark Gabriel is going to pick it up here.
Um actually, before you do, I I. I have a couple of questions myself about landscaping. Um. And I I don't want to um. Put too much of it hitch in your giddy up, but one of the things that um uh. Mister Dobremilsky flagged early on. Was the question about the trees removed for a utility project versus the trees removed for the construction project and. If you could just make that distinction, explain the utility project. Is that a university project or is it?
Um yes.
You know, PSENG or whatever.
Yes.
Let you talk.
Sure, sure. The utility project is part of our thermal utility effort to convert the entire campus to your exchange. So that requires a new network of thermal utilities throughout the campus. Uh they have, they have been and are going through this part of the part of the site. As you can see from this diagram, seventeen. Of uh those trees have been moved, seventeen of the existing trees have been removed by the utility project. And we're we're including those, uh you know, we're counting those as required for replacement, although I don't think they're required. To replace utility trees, trees lost by utility projects, but we're we're replacing those anyhow.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that better. I appreciate it. And I I I do um think that the. The selection of trees and and variety is is really nice. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
And not just trees, but the whole, the whole.
Ground cover, perennials.
Yeah, the grand ground cover perennial shrubs, the, you know, every level. It's nice.
Great, thank you.
Um are there other questions um for Mr. Bescho uh before we go on to stormwater management, Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you. Uh this isn't really a question from a special, but for my own uh knowledge, the three. Uh for the non-native species, the three magnolias, is there a waiver or something required for that? Or we just have the the uh. Power to approve those. I guess I don't know. That's a question for you, Louise, or for Jerry, or?
Yeah, I don't think it requires a waiver. Um uh. And we're, I'm I'm glad that they point pointed it out. And that they minimized uh the number of those. I do understand, you know, the the rationale behind it, but I don't think that it. I don't think that it requires any kind of a waiver or variance.
Okay, that's fine. It was again, it was just a uh, you know. Point of view, education for myself. So thank you.
Uh any other questions? From board members or staff? Okay, um. Thank you for allowing that interruption, Mr. DeGresio, Stormwater Management.
Uh this is Mark Gabriel. I'd like to have him, he was sworn in already, but I'd like to have him talk about his. Education and license.
Thank you, Chris. Again, my name is Mark Gabriel. I'm with Niche Engineering. Um I I. Graduated from Northeastern University with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. Um I I am a registered New Jersey uh professional engineer in good standing. I've testified uh in front of this uh board previously.
Uh thank you. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you very much.
Now, so moving to slide thirty-one.
Yeah. Slide thirty-one here. Um we want to start on this slide, uh remind the board of the campus-wide watershed divides that. All ultimately uh discharged to Lake Carnegie. And and so what you see here on the slide is is the campus uh to the north of the slide and and then Lake Carnegie to the south. I think. We may all recognize that from maps of the area. Uh the slide helps show where the proposed project is located uh within that sub watershed two. The project is in that that area in blue. This is uh the sub watershed two. It's just north of the poem party fields. Uh the poem party fields is where district scale subsurface stormwater management system was previously approved. Uh as part of the UHS project and I'm going to discuss more about this soon. For the purposes of this project, the sub watershed two discharges to two locations of the existing Washington Road stream. Which again ultimately discharges to Lake Carnegie.
I I'm sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt Mr. Gabriel, but can someone, as you talk about these reference points, including Poe Field and the stream and et cetera, et cetera? Can somebody thank you for identifying with the cursor? I think that's helpful for.
This is, this is Poe Field. This is the Schmidt Schmidt project. And this is the outfall.
I I was pointing on my monitor, but no one could see me.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
All right, I will be more descriptive on the slide thirty-two next year. So this is slide thirty-two. And this is where we indicate the existing conditions for the project. The site's bounded by Washington Road to the east and Fris Lane to the north. Uh Eno Hall, also home of the previously approved UHS project off to the west. As well as Gielane, Goheen Walk and Lewis Thomas to the south.
The site by the UHS project, you're talking about university health services?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Correct, thank you. Uh the site is in a sloped area that changes roughly thirty feet in elevation from uh elevation one seventy up near Fris all the way down to one forty and and the Gielane Goheen Walk area. The site includes existing landscape and building areas as well as existing vehicular driveways, parking areas and walkways. Though it is an apparent in this image, there is a considerable amount of existing utility infrastructure surrounding each side of the site. And there are no known water quality best management practices or structures on site. Additionally, onsite soil analysis and geotechnical reports indicate the predominant presence of a type D soil. The stormwater on the site generally sheet flows to the Washington Road stream in two directions to two separate outfalls. The blue arrow on the right side of the slide. Is where stormwater is captured in an existing closed drainage system to an existing outfall on the north side of the Washington Road stream. And the blue arrow on the bottom left of the slide is where stormwater is captured and conveyed. In an existing forty-eight inch drain line to an existing outfall on the northeast side of the Washington Road stream. And if we go slide. This slide here is for the proposed conditions for the project. The proposed conditions generally include the future building and fire access. Walkways, plazas, landscape areas and associated utilities. The stormwater for the project is proposed to discharge similarly to the existing conditions. That said, the blue arrow on the right side of the slide is where stormwater will continue to be captured. And conveyed in a closed drainage system to the Washington Road stream. The work in this sub watershed though proposes a reduction in impervious area to that which goes to the outfall today. The blue arrow on the bottom left of the slide that says to Po Party Field System. Is where stormwater is proposed to be treated and captured prior to being conveyed. Via the university health services, which I'll call UHS going forward. The university health services are UHS dedicated stormwater line. To the poem party field district scale stormwater management system. As I mentioned previously, the poem party field stormwater management system is a district scale subsurface system. That was approved under the UHS project. And as part of that approval, it included planned future development in this area. This system provided the required, this system, the poem party field system. Provides the required stormwater mitigation for the UHS project as well as the Schmidt Hall project. Not only does it provide the stormwater, the required stormwater mitigation for both these projects. And it also provides the stormwater mitigation for the twenty-one hundred year storm as well. Now I know that the twenty-one hundred year storm is looming on the regulations and it's been discussed in this board previously. So I just wanted to make a point that that is handled by the poem party field system for this project too. Although not required. Similar to the UHS project. The Schmidt Hall project proposes a reduction in vehicular impervious area. And therefore it doesn't meet the threshold for requiring water quality treatment measures. However, the stormwater management system does still include treatment of the proposed vehicular impervious area. Via two treatment devices that were approved under the UHS project. Those include a hydrodeme separator and a stormwater filter. And those discharge to the dedicated stormwater line and then to the Po Party Field System. Slide thirty-four. Is next. Now this slide was to show the proposed conditions of the project uh in the top right. That was, that image was taken from slide thirty-three. The bottom middle image shows the stormwater flow in blue arrows. From the dedicated stormwater line in Geo, uh I'm sorry, in the uh yeah, Geo Lane. Down to the Po Party Field System. And then back out to an outlet control structure. To provide the required stormwater mitigation. Then it goes back into a forty-eight, the existing forty-eight inch drain line. So the Washington Road stream. And the image still left is just provided for context to show what a proposed subsurface chamber system would look like before it's back built. What? I'm sorry, thirty-five? And and this is the last slide for me. It's intended to show the proposed green infrastructure associated with the project. As I mentioned previously, the project storm waters management system is conveyed and mitigated fully by the poem party field system. However, given the constraints of the existing site department, the existing utility infrastructure, as well as the challenging soil conditions, being the type D soils. We still worked hard to provide green infrastructure where we could throughout the project. The project includes five bio-retention basins shown in that darker green. Three permeable paver facilities shown in, I'm going to go with teal. Uh and a terrace with a green roof shown in the olive green. Uh the green infrastructure BMPs connect via a series of inlets, manholes and subsurface piping, which all ultimately discharge stormwater. To the poem party field system. Since the submission, there was a comment to request us to see if we could find more permeable paver opportunities with the project. We did look closer at this and we found more opportunities in the courtyard area. So this included increasing the permeable paver area from the thick blue line in the middle, the blue oval. Which was part of the submission. Uh to the entire courtyard, the remainder of the entire courtyard is shown in the teal. So this added in an approximate forty-three hundred square feet more permeable pavers beyond that what it was in the submission.
That's great. Thank you.
Uh you're welcome. Together, these low-impact green infrastructure approaches are not accounted for in the hydraulic or the hydrologic calculations prepared as part of this report. And therefore they do provide an added level of stormwater protection. And the DI GI approaches, these green infrastructure approaches are all proposed to be open bottom. To promote recharge and provide another level of stormwater treatment for these impervious areas. That's what I have.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions here? Would be helpful to pause.
Yeah, I just have a question in terms of the um. Uh Mister Scoopian had noted that the waiver for the Poe Party Field um. Green infrastructure requirement. Uh actually requires these uh small green infrastructure. Um measures on this project, but I'm not entirely clear. I think, Mark, you just said. Um, measures on this project, but I'm not entirely clear. I think, Mark, you just said. We still haven't really calculated quantities of water that are being treated by these. Uh, if you or Mr. Scoop, you can just um. Quickly describe what the nature of the requirement is in order to grant the waiver for the Poe Party Field.
Okay. So the na-. And the nature, I'm just trying to make sure I understood the question, the nature of the requirement. To provide, okay, so to to.
Mark, since, since, I didn't mean to interrupt, sir, but.
Oh, go right ahead, Joe.
Yeah, since it's the requirement that Mr. Cohen's asking, perhaps I should address that. And then you can address how the university, how the project will meet the requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Scoopy, and that's perfect. Thank you.
Thank, no, no problem. Um. Yeah, there was a comment earlier about, I'm confused when it comes to stormwater and yeah, the um, the the new state rules are. Challenging in in, and I would say due to their somewhat lack of consistency between different requirements. So we have to kind of find our way. Dan and I have had a couple of meetings um in in recent times with DEP. Try, the stormwater folks at DEP trying to clarify some of the confusion and trust me, I I've talked to other municipal engineers and other designers throughout the state and there's still confusion. So let's get to it. Um. Their ordinance requires. Uh, that both stormwater quantity and quality be addressed with green infrastructure measures. Uh, there's different types for different for quantity than there are for quality. This project does not require any water quality requirements. It does require quantity requirements that have to be addressed. By green infrastructure. And since another layer of confusion is that it's linked together with the UHS project. So um, and if you recall, the UHS project had the same waiver question. They were providing quantity. However, it was not through green infrastructure measures. There was a good basis for granting the waiver variance from the green infrastructure, which obviously can't be done. Uh, but to part of that waiver would require mitigation. For the failure to provide the quantity with green infrastructure. With the university health services, that mitigation was provided uh in in a bunch of computations and meetings that we had with the consultants and then a final summary memo. We have the same situation now, since the projects again are linked together where. I believe the waiver here, since they're both using the same basin down at Pope and Party Field, the waiver has been granted. What's missing here is we need, they need to provide the mitigation. For this project, which they have in the report that that was prepared. However. In the more recent conversations and meetings that Dan and I have had with DEP. We are, we have found out that the mitigation measures. The criteria for a mitigation measure is a a bit larger, let's say, than we originally thought reading the rules. That they not only have to provide a a volume of water being treated by green infrastructure. But that it also, that volume of water has to be, has to come from the same amount of impervious area. That the project that's being granted the waiver. So and it was a a layer of complexity that we didn't anticipate at first. So that's where we are with today. They provided a mitigation plan. However, based on the information we now have from DEP. They need to expand the details of that plan to include not just the volume. That you're treating, but also the impervious area that that volume is, that the impervious area that that uh runoff is being generated, that volume is being generated from. And again, we've had, we had meeting, a very productive meeting this morning. And I'll let Mark go into the, they're, you know, how they're going to up, provide that mitigation. But again, I I I'll just add at this point that, you know, the the university's provide, has been providing additional stormwater measures. On on, you know, projects in recent memory. So we're confident that um, that the details of this new mitigation. Requirement can be met. It's just, it hasn't been as of tonight. And then the other thing in my report was also that in providing those mitigation measures, uh, we need more details to demonstrate. That they do, they do indeed qualify as mitigation measures. Because the mitigation has to be designed to the same level. As an onsite measure would be. And right now we have summaries of the mitigation, but we just need to fa- to back up computations. Okay, that's, that's the requirement. Uh, trying that we're, we're having to meet and it's really basically just. Clarification from DEP about what a mitigation plan has to be.
Uh, I'm chuckling because it's like drinking from a fire hose. Um, for me, and I've been looking at this stuff for years. So, but, but when you, when you talk about the impervious cover.
Mm hmm.
Um, are you talking about the new impervious cover or all the impervious cover in the drainage area that is generating stormwater going to these BMPs?
It would be, uh, and we, and we had a good this meeting discussion of this this morning. Since, and this is some of the. This is some of the the clarific, this is some of the part of the new rules that really haven't been clarified. So we're applying as best we can the logic. And then when we hit a wall, we talk to DEP. The, the mitigation measure, the fundamental. Confusion here is that if you can't provide green infrastructure quantity control, which are the large rainfalls, the two, the ten, the hundred. Well, you can't do that with green infrastructure. Hmm. Well, okay, we'll let you go, but you're going to have to provide that green infrastructure somewhere else. Now, logic would say. It would be for the big storms, since you're not doing the big storms onsite. No, it only has to be the water quality storm. So that's, that starts the confusion and it it grows from there. Uh, Ms. Wilson, to answer your question. The requirement for mitigation is that you treat the runoff from the stormwater quality storm.
And is that still defined as one and a quarter inches over two hours?
Yes, yes. And so you have to treat that, which means that you're providing water quality treatment to the water quality storm. That means that you have to A, use a BMP that does that, that is, that is appropriate for water quality treatment. And then if you follow the rules, when you provide water quality treatment, that treatment is provided to the quote post-development runoff. In other words, all the impervious on the project site, not just the new impervious surface. Um, so yeah, that's how we've, that's, that's what we've been basing this on. And you know, it's correct. That all the impervious surface, so that if they can't provide. Here we go. If we can't provide quantity control. Of this project site's runoff for the two ten and hundred. With green infrastructure and the underground basin at Po and Party is not, and they've been granted a wa- waiver for that requirement. They just have to provide mitigation. And the mitigation has to be the treating, the runoff from the stormwater quality storm. From all of the impervious site, all the impervious surface on the site. And and they.
Okay, so adding all that permeable paving, pavement should, should help, right? I mean, because it does count for water quality.
Exactly. The bio retention, the small bio retention bases they're providing, the permeable paving that they're providing, all of those are officially stormwater quality storm treatment BMPs. Okay, um, and so, but they're not going to treat up to the water quality storm. They'll treat a a a smaller rain event, but they will get credit for a certain amount of volume. And they will get credit for the impervious surface that drains to them, that creates their runoff. But be the, being that they're onsite and that they can't treat the entire impervious surface, there's going to be additional mitigation measures needed. Now, same thing happened with university health services and there were sites cited at the, at the gym. And I believe, Mark, you can pick it up from here, but that's, that's the, that's the two things that we need to have a breakdown of the the mitigation measures. That would equal the water quality storm runoff volume from all the impervious surface. On the project site. And the the measures that they're providing onsite will do a portion of that. But there's some additional mitigation. And again, we've gone through a number of projects on the university already. That that appear to be more than, you know, more than adequate to meet the mitigation measures. But we just, we just need that paperwork provided and the details of the measures to make sure that they are truly, you know, that that the mitigation measures are designed to the same degree. As the uh, as the onsite measures. Now, Mark, you can, you can pick up from here as to what the university is proposing. But Mr. Cohen, I hope I didn't. Hope I didn't spin your head, but that's the requirement.
No, it was, it was very helpful. I just want to um. You you know, before Mark continues, connect the dots, you know, for the other members of the board. Um, people may re- recall that on one of our recent university projects, I think Joe had told us that. You know, they weren't required to do any uh. Stormwater quality treatment, and they were providing this kind of green infrastructure. They said, you know, we haven't really calculated the capacity. And he said, you really should be calculating the capacity because you may need it for another project. And that's what we're talking about.
Exactly. And then with an extra layer of that, where as you keep your tabulations, as you keep your bank account. Uh, for what you're doing and then you start to make withdrawals for future projects. It is not just the volume of runoff that you are treating with your additional measures. It's the amount of impervious surface that drains to those measures. Uh, and that's the, that's the new wrinkle that we found out in talking to DEP. It's a, it's a double requirement. And you know, that was a good time to start.
Mm hmm. Joe, is it just from the project site or is it from a larger drainage area?
We, we had, uh, Mr. Mother, we had that discussion this morning and what we've, we've always defined. Particularly on a big owner, big property like the, like the university, we've always defined it as the project site. And I know that the university, and again, I don't want to speak for them, but I know the university had discussions with DEP. Regarding a overall campus wide mitigation plan for future use for stormwater. And you know, EEP was comfortable with it at the time. And we've discussed it with them since then, Dan and I, saying that, look, can a mitigation plan? If there's a total amount of impervious and a total amount of volume of runoff that has to be treated, can it be done incrementally? Rather than one mitigation measure, several mitigation measures, and they were happy with. So we've always defined. The, the, the project site as the, the area of disturbance of this project. Uh, and it wouldn't be considered the entire university campus.
So, and and I I apologize for being dense about this. So there has to be water quality treatment. But could it be done offsite then, uh, through these mitigation measures?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the, the overall, the, the basic rule says that if you cannot obviously do green infrastructure on your property. Well, you have to do it somewhere else. If you, if you could do it on your property, you wouldn't need to waiver any mitigation.
Right, right, right.
Means you have to go somewhere else. And that was the topic of discussion this morning. Well, is it somewhere off the university property? And it was like, no, we've always treated university projects. As a project site. And if you want to do that, you know, on the other side of Washington. You you know, or on the other side of faculty or other side of the, the, the technical requirement is within a certain large drainage area. Um, that the, the USGS defines as a Huck fourteen. We won't get into that, but it's a fairly large area.
Thank you.
Yeah, not, not, but so you have some leeway as to where it is. But yeah, there are instances on other projects. Where that they do have to go outside their property. The university fortunately has enough other areas on their overall property.
We, I also didn't understand the incremental aspect uh too. Could you just maybe elaborate on that?
Certainly, I'll, I'll make it real simple. Let's say that, you know, uh, this project owes a thousand dollars, okay? And 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 twenty cubic yards of material, okay? Well. You have to mitigate for that amount, that thousand dollars and that twenty cubic yards. You don't have to go and find another place to spend a thousand dollars and create twenty cubic yards. You can do ten of them. Let's say with each one of them five hundred dollars or whatever the arithmetic is. I'm, I apologize. So as long as the total amount of all the mitigation measures equals the, the, the required amount, that's fine.
Okay, great.
And in fact, splitting things up and doing these, you know, many, many distributed small systems is very effective. Um, according to the stormwater experts I know and that, and. You know, having these huge underground systems is for the. For the gigantic storms, um, and maybe for the not so gigantic anymore storms, but it is really important. But these small. Distributed systems that more and more are appearing in, in the pro, all the projects we see indefinitely in university projects. Um, are just a really important piece of making a site more absorbent. Um, and so anyway, that's good to see. And I'm, it was interesting the way you explained it, Mr. Scoopy, and too with the. Choices of ways to make up.
Yeah, no, thanks. I, that, that just pop in my head.
Yeah. Mr. Taylor, I see your hand up. Uh, we haven't yet heard from Mr. Gabriel, but but go ahead and. And pose your question. You're on mute right now.
Am I on mute now?
No, you're, we can hear you. Thank you.
Oh, for, for some reason, my, my screen, technically a problem. My, my, my concern, I appreciate that we are evolving a set of standards clearly, and there isn't complete legislative agreement. Among all concerned on, on where things stand. I see nonetheless that as we're proceeding, we have a very complex. Structure, Princeton University, lots of buildings. All this is taking place underground. It's inter, it's integrated, it's interrelated, it's very technical.
Mm hmm.
And so I put myself in the position of, let's say, the manager. And I think about the enormous risk that stormwater management should play in my management process. And when I hear all of this, it seems such an evolving structure and so complex by nature that there must be challenging. Shall we say downside risks, management risks that have to be borne in mind to ensure that whatever we do. In fact, accomplishes the goals. So I'm, my focus is. The management role, once everything is up and running in an evolving scenario. In which the weather itself is changing. What are the downside risks that Princeton University faces? And that may be something for an offsite discussion, Louise. I appreciate that. But my concern is the downside risks in the role of management.
We just submitted a report of the uh management, str- man- management maintaining the systems.
A remark presenting the statistical evidence of what in fact happened or.
Extrapolate on that, I, I can. Um, and first of all, I just want to say, Mr. Scoopian, thank you for that, um, taking us through the regulations there. Um. And then, and back to Mr. Cohen, if you have any more questions on that, um. Uh, from earlier, just, you know, let me know too on where we're, what we're headed to next. Uh, but I think Mr. Scoopian did a good job explaining that as well. Mr. Taylor, uh, to your question, um, and what Ron was saying. Uh, each. Facilities uh does, does require a, a certain maintenance to of the facilities. They're all very much a passive facility where rainwater gets to just fall down, go into the facilities. Throw them via gravity into the stone, fill up, go out, that type of thing. But it's a very passive system. You know, we don't, we're not on pumps in this case or. Things that could break down, if you will, in that instance. And the university, uh, as part of the stormwater management on campus. They have what's called, um, you know, simply an operation and maintenance plan for all their stormwater infrastructure on campus, whether it's. Stuff that perhaps you've approved and passed applications. Or or infrastructure that you are looking at in current applications. They all have an operation and maintenance plan associated with them. And DEP really specifies what needs to go into the maintenance of those facilities. And Mr. McCoy's staff there at the university, they have many people on the grounds crew that work together to take care of that maintenance. And they're required to submit an annual report each year. Uh, to the municipality on how that maintenance is going. If there's any issues with any of the facilities and how they're addressing those issues, what they did to address those issues.
Uh, Mark, we lost a second there.
Oh, oh, I was on such a good roll, too. Sorry.
Uh, we we heard everything except just the last couple of seconds, and then your audio went out, so.
Okay, so they're they're just in the end, they're just required to provide that each year to the municipality. And and they have many, many people on campus that that do take care of that.
And and the it just I'll just I'm in to say that the the updates to the state stormwater rules and the higher standard that Princeton, the municipality sets in its stormwater control ordinance are all designed to uh minimize or try to minimize as best as possible risk and ensure that management practices are um uh are are good or, you know, so-called the best, the best management practices, that they're effective, that the calculations are based on realistic assumptions about absorbing water and um, a- and all of that said, um. You know, when Princeton gets a thirty inches of rain over two days or sixty inches of rain over, you know, however long it took to dump that kind of rain on Houston. Um, a couple of years ago, you know, the everything, everything will be overwhelmed. But the but the the higher standards really do, and the requirement for green infrastructure really are meant to control a lot more water and slow it down and make sure that more of it is absorbed into the ground and absorbed by vegetation and, you know, then evapot transpirated into the air and whatnot. Um, with an eye toward better management and lower risk. Um, and I'm I'm not sure whether that really addresses the question you were asking. I it it's possible that the question that you were posing is sort of beyond the purview of the planning board. Um, we we can, you know, we can and must um uh know for certain that the municipal and state requirements for stormwater management are met. Um, and beyond that, um, you know, we uh, you know, we don't, we don't have jurisdiction to um to ask for proof of uh, you know, uh. Uh, uh, of thinking about certain types of downside risk that don't relate to municipal land use law or the stormwater rules.
Yeah, thank you. Well taken.
May I may I just add, it it is a complicated topic. Uh, if anyone does have any questions for me, uh, Mr. Taylor perhaps mentioned, I think, you know, outside a planning board meeting. If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad with Dan through Dan's office to to help address them. Uh, and yeah, there is a layer, there is with the green infrastructure requirements. There has been a an extra layer of complexity added. Particularly when they're required for not just water quality and green and groundwater recharge, which I I support. The closer to the source of the pollution and the closer the source uh, you know, to the deprived re- recharge, we can put the new measure, the better. I agree with that wholeheartedly. I'm not totally on board with the idea of quantity control uh on on such small scales. Uh, because the um perhaps I'm showing my age, the the complexity now, we're relying on too many individual facilities to protect us from flooding. And our our computational ability is our computer models get more more sophisticated and our rainfall data get, we're we can compute them. But again, maybe I'm showing my age where it's just, it's it's a lot more complex. And, you know, but yeah, I'd be glad to share any thoughts or answer any questions, let's put it that way, as long as Dan's okay. Uh, and and with him, of course, if there's any other questions in the future, I'd be glad to help. Thank you.
Well, and thank you. And I mean, it seems to me, uh, not speaking for the university, of course, but that they're they're taking sort of a belt and suspenders approach here, you know, they they do have these uh monster underground systems that are meant to to uh protect against, you know, very, very uh extreme central flooding events. Um, and they're also building in a lot more of these small scale distributed systems with a bunch of vegetation, and that's really a positive thing, both for stormwater management and for a whole host of other things related to public health and safety and um, all of that, so.
Okay. May we just access to move on, Adam Chair?
Yes, yes, please. That would be good. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, I think, Mark, will you finish us? Okay. Now, architecture is simpler. So we're going to talk about the building now on slide thirty six, thirty seven. So this is just a summary uh of the uh assigned square footage, that's the abbreviation ASF. And then it it grosses up to the total GS of gross square footage of the building, which you'll see here. The academic departments that we've talked about, computer science, CITP, CSML, and Pixie. And you can see that computer science is definitely the primary user of this facility. But just this is the, this is the program that we're accommodating in these in these in this building. On slide thirty eight, uh, this is a a massing diagram that shows um the addition uh off to the left there and the existing GEO to the upper part of the drawing. I'd like, this is, I think, a good place to reinforce the fact that we are seeking uh conditional use approval pursuant to section seventeen A dash three forty seven B one, as Mr. Uh, as uh as was described in by Mr. Doper Miska in his is his comments. Uh, I think, I don't need, I don't think we need to go into the details of that section, but we did provide exhibits. They were reviewed as Mr. Doper Misk explained. And they, the interpretation is that they meet the standards of the uh of the regulations. Uh, but it basically is allows us to uh increase the volume ever slightly on the building, on the on the Schmidt Hall addition on the west side of the complex. As also was pointed out, the building, that building addition here is set set far into the middle of the campus away from the Washington Road Edge. And the sightlines from Washington Road are clipped by Moffett so that you do not even see the Schmidt Hall uh building in in the distance. I'll show some of the renderings, you'll get a, you'll get a sense of that. Uh, but uh those, I think, are the questions that I wanted to focus on on slide thirty eight. Um, slide thirty nine just simply uh puts a box around the addition, separating it from the existing building. So here you can see uh the Schmidt Hall addition, which is a mass timber structure with steel framing as part of it. And then there's a uh the the penthouse on the top there. And you see the two levels of of terraces that we've talked about. Level one is the one that's right at the lobby level, the common space level and the entrance to the north. Level B is at the level of the entrance to the south. So either way, you enter into the building. You're immediately adjacent to one of the one of the gardens. Slide forty uh shows the uh strategy here is to take a rather complex building and make a really fluid and easy set of connections. And that connection is primarily from the the north entrances to the existing historic towers. As I mentioned, the one toward the to the northeast will be made accessible. You can see a little bit of diagram of the accessible system in this axonometric. And they they connect in a very intuitive uh stair system that goes south adjacent to daylight, adjacent to the courtyards. Uh, so you can follow the daylight all the way out to the southwest corner of the building. So that's the kind of, that's the kind of primary system that organizes level B, which is facing Goheen. Level A, which is the intermediate level and level one, which is the level that faces to the to the north and the first campus center. Uh, as as Mark Gabriel said, there's a thirty foot drop from the upper level to the lower level. And that's accommodated through those changing floor floor levels. Beyond that, uh, the building is uh uh stacked with the the different elements of the of the program. Uh, this is on slide forty one. I don't think I need to go through this, but uh, it's important to say that the classroom, classrooms, which are the major attractor for the for the influx of students in and out of the building are organized on level B, uh, level B, level A, and level one. So we keep the the students accessing their classrooms in the big volumes and numbers that they will be in in those areas where they can just enter the building and have classrooms at the level that they enter. Or they may have to go up or down a level to enter their to enter their classroom, so they don't tax the elevator loads in the building. Uh, but this just shows the distribution of the different programs uh throughout the building. Slide forty two, who was named forty one, says his number forty one B, that's called a forty one B. This is the one that talks about the uh the uh variance request. Uh, as Mr. Dobomisky pointed out in his comments at the beginning, we are seeking two additional signs be be beyond the one permitted by the code. Uh, the maximum area would be seven, it would be sixteen square feet for each. We think they're probably around fourteen square feet. And they are, uh, they're there for uh identification and wayfinding. It's a, it's a big complex. And we want to make sure that when people are approaching from the particularly the north, the west or the south, that they know where uh where Eric Mendez Schmidt Hall is. So they're simply there to do that. And they're quite modest and integrated with the architecture of the campus. Slide forty three uh is a transition slide to talk about sustainability. Um, I'll give a few high level details here and then maybe talk about some progress we're making on similar buildings to give you a sense of how we're achieving our targets. The overall overall for this project, we have a thirty percent reduction in global world global warming potential that we're achieving through uh strategies for to reduce embodied carbon. That's primarily through the mass timber framing uh and decking of the uh addition, which is, you can see that that note in here on the upper left. Uh, that will attribute uh twenty one percent of our embodied carbon reduction is achieved that mass timber structure. An additional nine percent of carbon reduction will be achieved through um uh a a strategy to replace cement fifty fifty percent of the cement in the concrete mix. So as you know, cement is highly intensive in terms of energy use, the production of cement. And it can be replaced with fly ash and slag which are byproducts of other industrial processes that reduce the cement content. And that that would go as another nine percent of reduced embodied carbon to achieve the thirty percent. There are some other strategies. This building will be tied to the to the new thermal system for uh chilled water and hot water that will be distributed to campus. There's a high performance envelope, including a high performance envelope in the renovation of Geo Hall. There is a healthier material strategies throughout the building, intensive green roof at this uh upper terrace off of a level off of level one. Uh, bird safe glass will be throughout the building. And uh you see bike parking and the stormwater strategies that we just talked about. All those things uh are part of the stormwater or part of the sustainability strategies of the building. Just to give you a sense of what we've been able to achieve in some of our recent projects. Uh, for example, on the art museum. Uh, we are able to get a forty percent cement replacement uh for certain portions of the of the concrete, the six thousand and eight thousand PSI concrete. We're able to get forty percent cement replacement. On ES and Cs, we're generally getting about fifty percent cement replacement with slag and fly ash. And as I said, that's the strategy we're playing, we're playing on this building. So we're actually seeing these savings in the mixed designs that we're receiving from the contractor for those projects, which is good, good progress. You know, we've had several conversations with this board about how we can meaningfully reduce uh the embodied carbon in concrete. Uh, and we look forward to a future where where we can look at Puzzle Lands as as a promising technology for to reduce uh embodied carbon in in concrete.
Look at what was ratio just used?
Puzzle Lands, P O Z Z O L A Ns, they're a ground glass technology that can be used to uh as the as the aggregate, as a as a binder in cement, concrete and concrete.
Thank you.
All right. Slide forty five is a a slide that we're going to transition to the actual experience of the building. Uh, slide forty six uh shows the historic uh uh Geo Hall. Uh, the existing building, highly articulated collegiate Gothic surface. But really behind that collegiate Gothic surface is essentially a flexible loft building. Uh, and so that is what the addition is. It's a flexible loft building without a highly articulated collegiate Gothic surface. I just want to point out that there's a distinction here in the base of Geo Hall, and you'll see the addition that we've designed also picks up on the articulation of of the base. Slide forty seven shows the uh beautiful uh details of the exterior of the building. And uh the on the right, the view of the commons uh in nineteen seventies and in the lower right. The view of the commons a year after the building was finished or as the building was being finished in nineteen ten. You'll note that on the upper right, uh, over time, the commons had been filled in with a mezzanine uh on the northern side, which is on the left of the diagram. This this building, this photograph is looking to the east and north is to the to the left here. And uh that that uh beautiful tall windows had been filled in with a mezzanine that you can see in the view from the nineteen seventies. In our in our design, you'll see that we're clearing out the space to recall the original design of that common space. Um, this is slide forty eight, uh, as I, as I did at the concept hearing, I talked about how uh, the building has a whole family of uh grotesques and gargoyles. The building was originally programmed with biology being in the eastern part wing of the building and geology on the west. And Gudson Bordelum was the sculpture responsible for these gargoyles and grotesques. He is also responsible for Mount Rushmore. There are more than sixty five of these ornate structures statues on the building. And the uh uh the interesting fact is that the biology building has uh living animals such as rhinoceros eagles, wild boars, pelicans, and the biology building. Uh, I mean, the geology building had extinct species such as a uh uh such as a horseshoe crab, giant scallop and a parrot, a pterodactyl. So they're all there living on the building and being restored. Slide forty nine zooms out a little bit and shows the context of this building in the campus. And on the bottom is the is a collage of uh campus materials. This obviously sits in the middle of a part of the campus that is primarily uh a a warm earth colored brick with some limestone trim. And those are the materials that are picked up uh in the design of the materials for the project. Slide fifty is just reiterates the point, the opportunity we have to clear up the southern facade of the existing building and make it enhance it and make it more visible uh around the courtyard that we're going to be creating. Slide fifty one, now we're zooming into the actual materials on the left are the are the more reddish brown colors of Geo. And on the right are the little bluer and rosier colors of Schultz Hall. So Schmidt will touch both of these buildings. And so we're trying to find a family of specific brick materials for Schmidt Hall that fit within the context of these two very particular buildings. Slide fifty two shows the material palette that we're proposing on the left is a is a photograph of the bricks in a simple panel laid laid over the existing brick of Geo. You can see the the variation of this earthy burnt brown brick is what we're what we're achieving with the brick that we're proposing. And on the right is um a the rosier uh called Indicat Rose Blend. That's sitting against the also against the Geo Masonry. That rose blend is used for what we call these uh uh infill panels. So the architectural frame of Geo Hall has a larger frame. And then there's a panel of a different colored brick that that brick reduces the amount of glazing, which reduces the amount of heat gain and it improves the energy performance of the building while still allowing the articulation of a more generous scaled frame of the building that helps reinforce the loft-like character of the building. You can see some playful contrast there. In the courtyard, slide fifty three here. Um, we are trying to lighten up the presence of the facade to bring more light and air and a lighter sense of space in that courtyard. It is a a generous sized courtyard, but nevertheless, we want to want to make sure that it has a kind of lightness, a light touch to it. And so we're selected again, a brick A, which is shown on the left for the frame. And brick B, which is shown on the right for the infill panel, and they're shown against limestone uh in the left image and against the the color of the mace of the brick on Schultz Hall on the right. Slide fifty four, now at at the concept design, there's a question about whether or not this brick was too light and there'd be a kind of sense of any any glare. And we want to make sure that that we are not uh making it too bright. So we we put those brick samples up against uh the south face of the chapel, which is a, you know, very, very large facade that faces into the green of Macash Courtyard. And we're pleased to see that the tones of these bricks are very much in the family of values of the of that south facade. So we're confident that uh this will not produce any excessive light or glare in that courtyard space. Slide fifty five, um, now we're looking at some of the renderings. We're looking at the west elevation of Geo. Uh, the limestone here is probably a little bit uh brightened by the kind of rendering. But you can see the highly articulated uh collegiate Gothic facade, the articulated. But you can see the highly articulated uh collegiate Gothic facade, the articulated base next to uh the loft like quality of of the Geo addition, which is really intended to be a kind of quieter, gentler uh uh composition that that doesn't try to compete with Geo but complements it. And there's a light touch glass panel, a kind of uh a frame of light glass that touches the existing building uh to to the addition. Slide fifty six uh is a elevation that gives a better sense of the, I mean, you wouldn't you wouldn't experience the heights of buildings this way. But this goes to to reinforce the uh maybe the point about the conditional use permit that we're seeking that shows the the height of the addition slightly higher than the lower cornice of the west facade, uh but well below the middle and upper cornice of the middle portion of the building and certainly below the towers of of Geo. And as I said earlier, this is facing toward the campus away from Washington Road. Washington Road is buffered by Moffett Hall and you would not see uh the building from Washington Road. It's very consistent with the nearby buildings. Slide fifty seven is a bit more realistic about the mass that one would see. We're here at the uh southwest corner of the building. The fire uh lane is going off to the left and as Stumm explained, it's bordered by the cobble to reduce the width of it. You'll see the uh sort of robust landscape of trees and ground cover on that west facade and the sort of quiet gentle loft like quality of the building, uh generous sized windows and that infill panel. And then you see to the to the right, Schultz Hall, which is a butted on the right and you barely see through the trip the trees on the left, Geo Hall, which would be the far left part of the slide. Slide fifty eight comes back to the point I made about the articulated base. A very highly articulated base in the existing Geo building, but we're trying to uh pick up on that articulation on the base, make it interesting down at pedestrian level with a uh sort of articulated uh rotation of the bricks at that lower level that creates a kind of pattern of of light and shadow and just because a light touch uh accentuation to that lower base level. Slide fifty nine then is the entrance uh into that southwest corner. We're on Goheen Walk uh looking into the building to the north. You'll see the lighter brick begins to come out and present itself at this entrance to lighten up the entrance space. You'll see one of the one of the signs in this case with a cast stone embedded in the kind of panel of that brick. This is the kind of character of the signage, similar signage, but different uh material on the north uh towers of the building. Slide sixty shows the the courtyard, um the lighter color of the frame and infill panel here. The lower courtyard at level B, the upper courtyard terrace at level A. Um and this level is, as I mentioned, is the level next to the commons at the entrance. This on slide sixty one is a view of that commons. In this case, we're looking to the west. So those northern windows are to the right. You'll see here grand, those grand northern windows, large scale windows and a uh very sort of regular articulation of a structural frame, in this case a concrete frame that marches down through the space. The space will be used for the community for collaboration. So the graduate study spaces upon the up on the mezzanine. Slide sixty two shows, uh we're looking toward the northwest northeast corner of the of the building, that entry tower. And as I said, that from that, from the entry vestriol that northeast lobby, we've created a ramp, an accessible ramp that comes up here to a mid landing and then turns back and heads up and comes up in into the middle of the space here. Actually, you can barely, you can begin to see it a little bit here and on the, and I think those are the best slides of it. I think I might have one later. Slides is slide sixty three, um now we're at the intersection of the new addition, as you see, coming in and out of the existing Geo building. On the left, you see through to that common space and you're entering into a new frame that makes an opening below the historic uh uh limestone windows. And you're seeing the exposed brick facade of the of the uh original Geo building. To the right is now the the addition, which is the mass timber frame. But it has the similar rhythm of a structural system that marches down the corridor, always looking out to the garden. This is the entrance or exit to that garden and the the large scale windows that face out to the landscape there. Slide sixty three, now we've just rotated a little bit and now we're looking to the south. Uh this is uh the kind of large uh lecture spaces to the right behind that reddish wall. The stair that goes down to levels A and levels B and out the southern entrance is to the left hugging the 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 large windows that face out to the garden. And we think that this this wonderful mass timber structural frame here complements the historic frames that are articulated uh in the historic commons of the original building. Sixty four here is a middle landing as you're coming down uh the stairs. So this is at level the level A, uh to the right, you go up to level one to the, I mean, to the left, you go up to level one, to the right, you go down to level B and to the uh Goheen Walk entrance. And then here we are in sixty six, I think that's last slide was missed. Well, it's six label sixty four, it's truly sixty five. And now we're here uh at the and sixty six at the southern entrance to the building. We've just come in off of Goheen Walk. There's some teaching uh classes here, classrooms here. To the right, you'll see the entrance to the courtyard and the stair that goes up to levels A and to level one. Um this is the, I'm gonna end, I'm gonna end here on slide sixty seven, slide sixty, it just says thank you. And this slide sixty seven is the kind of final image you want to leave you with that I think sums up the building, which is a uh a kind of opportunity to reclaim this historic building and uh use it for the new uses of computer science, which is going to be a fantastic uh opportunity to bring together computer science departments to the campus. I'll stop there and then we can open up any slides. Uh we don't want to have conversation uh or to and answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Um questions from board members? Mr. McGowan?
He he may have, you may have mentioned it, but um there was a question in entering report that the proposed structures, equipment or materials shall be readily accessible for far in police protection. As that.
Yes, I showed that in the vehicular diagram that showed the fire lanes that surround the site.
Okay.
So it's 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 it has been reviewed with the fire marshal, municipal fire marshal and all the fire lanes are um in accordance with those conversations.
And then one other question. Who are Eric and Wendy Schmidt?
Genus donors to Princeton University?
I think they give to PBS too, but that's beyond our jurisdiction. It's not the first time I heard those names, so it must be NPR or PBS.
He's to be the former CEO of Google.
I think he was one of the founders.
Correct.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Quinn?
Uh I'm just suggesting that we take our break at this point since it's my 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 duty along with uh as Mr. Cohen's duty is to uh move to adjourn. Mine is to move to break.
Uh that's a good idea. So it's right at nine o'clock. Um see everybody back at ten after, okay? Ten, uh nine, ten sharp. Thank you. Good, and um we have twelve members uh of the public here, just so folks know. Um I I don't know whether anyone wants to comment, but first we need to uh offer our our own board members the opportunity to ask questions. Uh and also our professionals, uh an opportunity to weigh in, ask questions, answer questions that people may have of them. So that's what we'll start now. Are there questions from board members for any of the university's representatives? Um I have just a a couple that I neglected to ask earlier. Uh on slide fifteen, where you show the um pathways for and identify them as sha- shared for, I think I may may have misunderstood, um bicycles as well as, you know, pedestrians and scooters and also the um these were the accessible. Uh, you know, ADA accessible. And I just wanted to know how there was one, um maybe you can pull up that slide, uh fifteen, I think it was, may have been sixteen. Um a sort of serpentine, yeah, to the to the left, to the west of Schmidt. That is supposed to be for bikes as well as scooters, pedestrians and Yes, it's Wheelchairs potentially or people with walkers. I I and if so, how wide is that? And and I was just concerned a little bit about the whether it's a safe place for people to stay on their bikes if there's uh if there are other people using the path and whether there could be signage suggesting that people get off their bikes for that section or something. I, it just jumped out.
Yeah, I would say, I I'm gonna see if one of our team members can let me know how wide that path is. Um, we are, um, you know, we we have shared pathways throughout campus uh with um scooters, bikes, uh wheelchairs, um all sorts of personal mo- mobility devices. And we size them for the sort of population that's going to go through that zone. But I'm not, I'm not sure I have the exact dimension with with that pathway. We'll see if someone can let me know.
And Ron, could you give us information as what the grade change is like in where that you have right there, yeah, in that whole area?
It's it's below five percent. So that's 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 considered a a great stone, yes.
Oh, that that the sneaking pass is eight feet wide.
Eight feet, okay.
Yes.
And it's the same material uh uh from one side to the other, not a sort of central path area with a different um, you know, stone or whatever on the edge. It's
The the portion is eight feet wide uh with the concrete, the full width. And then once you get to the fire lane portion, uh we have a cobblestone on both sides of the concrete. So it gets a much wider.
Right, okay.
Yep.
And I see that there's some that there's a connector that I actually did not notice before. Is that with stairs?
That's Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, that ma- that makes sense. Um I also, I mean, this is such a small thing. Um but I was delighted to see that blueberries are part of the planting plan in the uh in the um
Yes, heavy blueberry. We actually planting some of them for other part of the campus as well.
And I just wondered, I mean, I assume that your um that your way, you know, your landscape practices and all uh would allow for people to just eat those blueberries. Just wanted to double check that 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 um, you know, you're using organic practices or or otherwise not not, you know, that there's an awareness that people will eat those blueberries as nature intended. Um and I assume that, you know, that the way these um plantings are maintained would allow for that. That's all I'm asking.
Right, I believe the university is trying to minimize, you know, using the pesticides such so. Uh, yes, that's something, yeah, we we can, we can work through with with the uh the maintenance team.
Yeah, it it's just an awareness thing. I'm not throwing it out as a condition. Uh, and I assume that other folks have thought about that.
Sorry, will there be signage?
No.
Yeah, so, okay.
Um the only other thing uh that I wrote down, uh and this is really a stormwater question, um which I'm almost hesitant, but there was a reference to the twenty one hundred year storm. Um, which I think is, you know, looking forward, I'm wondering uh how how that's being defined? Is that defined the same way, you know, a water quality storm or a two ten or a hundred year storm? Is it presumed to be a certain number of inches of rainfall over a certain time period?
Yeah, that's a great question. The the draft version of the new regulations that were out for public comment included uh rainfall rates that added um for each county, it was different. This county in particular, you know, it it adds a certain percentage to the two ten and one hundred year storm event to increase that storm event by by X percentage. Um, you know, they, for example, I think the two year storm didn't increase terribly too much, but the hundred year storm increased by approximately, if I recall, is forty percent up to forty percent. So it's a pretty hefty increase. And that's what they were they were seeing. So those, although not current regulations and it's based off of the information we have at the moment, uh those are the storm events that we used uh to confirm it would pass the twenty one hundred year.
Okay. Um, a- any other questions from from board members or from staff? Or um yeah, Mr. Anisok, uh I'm sorry, yeah, Anosike, sorry, I need to look at your name each time. I'm so sorry that I
That's that's okay. That's okay.
Go right ahead.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I do have uh I guess follow up questions on the comments in our report, my comment, uh review report. Uh, that I would like the applicant to speak to. Uh, the first one will be the first comment regarding the uh number, the increase in faculty, I think it's fifty or forty nine, forty nine. Um, in the traffic report that they presented, um, they indicated in the report that uh the increase in faculty uh does not uh require, there's no, does not, is not necessitated by an increase in the student population. That there will be no increase in the student population. And I had a question regarding that, why will the faculty increase and the student population will not increase? But then the response that they uh God says there's gonna be a gradual increase of student population of five hundred in into twenty twenty five, which will be two years from now. So I guess uh my question will be, how much or how many of that five hundred will be assigned to this hall? And if there is any, uh um i- is that number being accounted for in the uh parking, bicycle parking that uh we did comment on? And then then the other part of it is that the parking for the faculty is also referenced to the study on garage. That that's there, there's enough space or is it accounted for in the parking study? Uh I I took a look at the East Campus Garage Study and I couldn't find any reference to uh additional uh development being accounted for. Um, the Hobson College also referenced study on garage as the additional parking will be used in study on garage. And I'm also aware of uh, the university has another project that is under construction now. I think this is in Wet Winterside, south of the uh DNR Canal along Washington, uh between the DNR Canal and Route One. Uh, the graduate campus, I think it's called Lake Campus, north and south, uh which is gonna generate over a thousand trips. They also reference study on garage as uh their supply, uh the supply. So it seems like all these projects are referencing study on garage, but there's no uh uh there's no indication of how they're included in in the analysis that was done in study on garage. And Washington and faculty uh intersection, it's presumed to uh operate at capacity with that graduate study. As a matter of fact, university indicated that they're gonna do uh the monitoring uh after they open. So I if you can speak to um how this uh uh traffic is being accommodated, uh this garage in this study, because I couldn't find it in the uh parking garage study, perhaps uh you have uh more information. Parking garage study, perhaps you have more information on that. And the other question I have is with regards to. The ADA. Improvements that are being proposed. At the Washington and Ivy Lane intersection. There is an existing bus shelter there. I, I, I know you responded, the applicant responded that that shelter is being located, it's going to be relocated to another. In another project, but I'm not sure the, the project that is being referenced. And where it's being located to. So if you can speak to where this shelter will be located to. And what project, under what project? And also the third one, my last question will be. With regards to the modifications that will be done at the. Ivy Lane and Washington that will affect the existing traffic. Signal equipment. Again, your, the response is that it's going to be. Accommodated in the Washington Road Pedestrian Improvement Project. And I inquired from the municipality, municipality does not have any plans related to that project yet. So it seems to me that there's no approval on that project. So. My question will be if you can speak to what happens if there are. Comments or commentary that would require revisions to that plan? How does that affect what you're proposing now? Will you go back and change what you're proposing if. There are revisions to that plan since it's not been approved yet? If you can speak to that, that's, those are the three major things that I have. The other ones, I think you answered, you. Are indicating in your testimony that you're going to address the ADA, I did not, his corner, and that should be a condition of approval. That's all I have.
Let me try to.
I was, I was just going to try to set the stage, but if you want to take it, then that's, that's fine. East Campus. And how. Yeah.
I'm going to have Charlie. I'm going to say a few things. I'm going to respond to some of these issues. I'm going to ask Charlie to talk about the capacity. Of the stadium garage. Let me, let me, I'll take the easy ones and then Stuart will talk about some of the other issues. So. First of all, the, the Lake Caps development has its own parking garage that's standalone. That serves that population, that that population is not. Being served at Stadium Garage. Charlie can expand, expand on that. And also come back to some of the. Comments about, you know, the student body population. The, I think the report was slightly incorrect. We are expanding the undergraduate student body population. 125 students a year for four years, but students do not drive to campus. So that does not add any, any, any student vehicles to campus. The faculty growth, the 49 faculty growth is anticipated in the expansion in the new garage of the stadium garage. The. Faculty are growing, not because the student body population is growing, but because more of the students are choosing computer science as their major. So the students, you know, can be main, can remain steady state even without growing. And, and over different generations, the student gravitate to different departments. Those departments have to respond with more faculty to serve those students. Or we, we limit students in those, in those departments, but in this case with the expansion of. The importance of engineering and computer science in a liberal arts institution over the next. In the upcoming century, we are, we are increasing, we're allowing a greater number of students to take those, those majors. So maybe Charlie, you can talk about the. Planning for the stadium garage and the capacity that it's, it's sized to have, and maybe even some early indications of its, of its demand right now.
Sure. So thanks, Ron. So hi, everyone. Charlie Tennyson, Director for Transportation and Parking. So I can, so there are two parts there, and then there was also the bus stop, but should we wait on the bus stop? So. So yes, the short answer is that the Stadium Drive Garage. Capacity was designed to. Add a net, I believe it was about 300 spaces from the parking that was lost for the construction projects in E S and Cs. In the surface lot, it was the old surface lot 21, just southeast of the football stadium. And that net addition of, of I think approximately 300 spaces, I may be, this is not exactly right on the number. Accounted for the growth that Ron's referring to in the, in the university, in the faculty and staff related to, to this project as well. Right now, I can tell you the parking capacity across the. Institution is, is. Really good. So we have, we have plenty of parking space in the Stadium Drive Garage. Currently, we have. About a thousand vacancies a day in the 1500 space facility. So. Part of that has to do with the fact that as E S and Cs moves down and inhabits its facility. That garage will start to have more occupants that are parking in Northeast Campus. We'll also have some other occupants as these buildings come online. And one of the. One of the really nice things and, and sort of the genius of the design of the Stadium Drive Garage is that the Tiger Transit Shuttle System. Can service many, many. Areas on campus, really pretty much the entire campus from routes that originate from the garage. And right now those routes operate on Faculty Road westbound and then northbound on Washington. So that services commuters and, and so faculty and staff commuters, graduate commuters who are driving and visitors. But once Ivy Lane is returned with the E S and Cs project, we'll actually also be able to operate Tiger Transit. Northbound on the east side of the stadium and west onto Ivy Lane, which will be a proximal stop to that. So Fris Lane location. If that's helpful.
And just to step back, just to give you a full picture. So the university. Had planned for the development of the East Campus and some additional changes going back. I can't remember when we did the garage, but it was like five years ago, four years, maybe even less now. I don't even remember. But. So what we did was we took the big parking lot, surface lot. Consolidated that into building and then projected expansion, including this expansion. That we planned on handling at the garage. So that's why you continue to hear our reference to the garage. Because this was all discussed at the time with the traffic report. The expected expansion and it's all falling into place. And one of the things that you talked about was the condition of. Once we get at a certain point or level of occupancy, we will then do another traffic study or report. That will look at that intersection to figure out if additional improvements are being used. So. This is consistent with, you know, many years of planning. And that's why we continue to reference that and you see that in some of our responses. So it's been a very planned and very thoughtful process. And also at the end, there's the ability for the municipality to review the data once we do it. And in addition, we do a yearly parking report that will provide the numbers of the parking. Spaces available as well as the bike. So as I said, this has been a very thoughtful process. When we talked about the student expansion, we did that in other projects like the dormitory projects. And at that time, we talked about how students don't have, undergraduates don't have cars. There are exceptions, but throughout the entire campus, there's less than 100 exceptions every year almost. For the entire undergraduate, undergraduate population. So that's really. And here we're not adding any because we're not adding any additional dormitories. So I just want to kind of give you the picture and I think we had some consultants talk to very specific questions here. And also as Mr. McCoy indicated, in, in, in West Windsor, that's a whole separate. Depart, that's a whole separate process. And it's separate garage that is being built there is under construction and almost to the level of being occupied. And handled completely separately.
I've just come back to the stadium garage capacity and it's 351 spaces net increase was designed into that garage.
Okay, thanks for. Thanks for giving us that number. That's good to have. For the record, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to. Give a prod to Ron or Charlie to talk a little bit about the improvements to Washington Road as well. Victor, I apologize if you did not get an invitation to that meeting. The planning board. Did see a, an in-depth presentation about all. All of the improvements that are planned, the pedestrian improvements for Washington Road and. But I think somebody should talk to your concern about, you know, timing for that and how that relates to this project.
Maybe Stuart, you can talk about the, the. The sort of strategy for that intersection and the traffic signals. Charlie can, Charlie can jump in and talk about the big picture planning strategies if that would be helpful also.
Christopher, you want to. Give his credentials?
Stuart needs to be, yeah.
Stuart was sworn in, so we just need to talk about his credentials. Mr. Gordon, can you give us your background, education and experience?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering. I also have a master's degree in engineering that focused on transportation. Graduate from University of North Carolina in Charlotte. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, Pennsylvania and Delaware. And I am also a certified professional traffic operations engineer. Under the Institute of Transportation Engineers Council. I've been practicing, yeah, yeah. I've been in New Jersey practicing for over 35 years.
Thank you for that. We accept, accept your qualifications.
Okay. So as Ron noted, the, the Washington roadway pedestrian improvement project was presented to the town. Previously, and at the intersection there at Ivy, as part of those improvements, traffic signal improvements and relocation of. The traffic signal equipment would be completed. It's anticipated this work would be completed prior to this project being completed. If that is not the case, then interim traffic signal improvements could be implemented to provide. A clear passageway for the pedestrian movements to the pathways to and from. The east side of Washington to the west side of Washington. As Ron mentioned earlier, he wanted to test, and when he stated that it'd be like a, we call it a barnyard dance there at the intersection where pedestrians can. Have exclusive time to cross Washington Road. They can go diagonally or straight across or up. And that will provide a really good freedom of movement for pedestrians to get to the destinations they need to get to on either side of the roadway. I think that answers, I believe, the signal equipment. Question.
Great, thank you. Have your questions been answered, Mr. Anosuke, to your satisfaction?
I guess, the bus shelter, where, where is it going to be relocated to?
I could comment about the bus shelter, Victor. So the bus shelter at Fris Lane, a couple of things about that. One is that. The, where the shelter was located was. Right in the way of the east-west connector and leading into the intersection. So for the long-term plan. That would have been problematic. The second thing about that shelter and that stop frankly is. It's kind of an unsafe condition there at Fris Lane, the way with vehicles turning into the loading dock and sort of that area of the campus. It also was across the street from. What is now a construction, you know, entry with, at the E S and Cs project. And so as part of. Not only adjusting the transit network for the Stadium Drive Garage and for the current condition of the construction there. And also thinking ahead to the sort of future condition that Ron described tonight. The bus stops serving that location would be, passengers would board and, and alight from Goheen Walk. Slightly, just slightly further south. And then the next. Bus stop on Washington Road further north are both north and southbound locations on McCosh Walk, which is just there at the Robertson Hall location. Something that we'll continue to think about with the circulation plan is how Tiger Transit will operate specifically from the Stadium Drive Garage. To, in that pattern I described where it's going northbound on the east side of the stadium. And then, you know, continuing on westbound on Ivy Lane. Potentially stopping there just short of the intersection to serve that area of campus where, where passengers could then alight. And make a safe connection across the street at the intersection Stuart and Ron have described.
Now, if I may, Mr. Anosuke had suggested that it be relocated, but that's already been done or maybe it's been just removed completely, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, that's completed.
Removed and completed, Charlie, correct?
That's correct.
Reinstalled.
Oh, somewhere else. The, the shelter is no longer located at Fris Lane.
Yeah.
Hey, good. Thank you. Other questions for, from board members or from staff or professionals for university representatives? Any other issues that the staff want to raise? Just want to say it's really helpful that the university prepares these. Response memos. It really, it really does help. With the, this part of the meeting. So seeing no.
Just what I intend to do when we get to the conditions, assuming there's a motion to approve it.
Well, we have to hear from the public, but.
Right, exactly. But when we get to that, it's to go through all the, our professionals' memos and the corresponding sections of the response memo. So we can think that exactly. And I'm sure I'll be asking the professionals, you want X in, you want Y in, etc.
Okay. Yeah, good. So I will turn now to open the. Meeting to public comment. There are 12 attendees. And now is your opportunity to address the board if you. Would like to pose questions or make comments about this application. I'm not seeing any hands go up. You would. Press the raise hand icon, or if you're, I don't think we have anybody joining just by phone. I think a lot of folks on the, in the attendees room are associated with the university. So maybe there will be no. But I, but this is your opportunity in case you're not affiliated with the university or even if you are. I'm not seeing any hands go up. So give it another two or three seconds. Any comments? Nope, feel like an auctioneer. So I'm closing, closing the meeting to public comment. Come back to. Our panelists and any final thoughts, deliberations, suggestions? Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, you know, it's such a minor thing that I didn't want to bring it up during the, the questions to. The applicants, but I want to pick up on something that Mr. Cohen said back at the, the concept review meeting regarding. The Commons area. And it looks, it looks to me like there are many opportunities for decorative elements to be added. Within there. I don't know if there's a, you know, if you work with the university art museum or if there's an office. That deals with artwork on campus, but I think that there are many opportunities there and I hope that those will be explored.
If I could just, I'll just respond and say, that's a great comment, a good point. James Stewart and I, James, the director of that museum and I co-chair the Campus Art Steering Committee. We look at campus art as a campus-wide resource and we are in the process of identifying. You know, a range of sites around campus for the next generation of campus art. So it's, it's sort of, it's an open dialogue and you can imagine we have lots of opportunities. The team, the team, you may have seen in that one rendering of the, the new addition to looking to the south. The architectural team being quite inventive and clever is looking for a decorative pattern. On the, the large blank wall of the lecture hall which faces into that corridor. But it's a great comment. We'd love to be able to animate it. We'll see how, how that, how, what opportunities we have as we go forward.
Right, thank you.
Thanks for that, Owen. Ms. Capazoli?
I just want to thank the.
I just want to thank the university for using um our concept review process. Because I think it leads into a very smooth application process. And um, you know, I thought it was a great project then, and I still think it's a great project now. So, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, and uh I also want to thank the university, especially for the way. Um, you've been presenting materials uh on the last couple of projects because it is so great. To see the actual samples against actual walls um in actual daylight. Uh, computer rendering is amazing, um but uh. In a way, it's almost too amazing, you know, you can make things look too good. And uh it's really helpful for us to see the the real materials, so thank you.
It's really true, that's. Something we might even put on a checklist or something. Suggest, you know, for other projects, it really is helpful. Thanks. Um, any other comments from board members? Thoughts? Questions?
Um, just one thought, uh, Madam Chair. Is it the whole conditional use is two aspects of that as I understand it, but I'd love to see either Derek or Dan Weisman jump in. And one is whether it qualifies as conditional use, given. Requirement that it be treated as conditional use with the height, but you have to, if you've met certain criteria, it would qualify. And then there's a set of standards that have to be satisfied as well. Do we want to go through that, Madam Chair?
Um, I think it would be good, as you suggested, that uh for Mr. Bridger and or Mr. Weisman to opine. I see Derek um unmuted himself. So means probably flipping through pages to. Hi, Mr. Bridger.
Good evening, Madam Chair. So actually, the board should consider, uh, I don't want to read through all the criteria, and I think uh it was touched on earlier. That the uh proposed structure, equipment and materials are readily accessible for fire and police protection. Um, the applicant discussed that and our uh fire official also uh touched upon it in his uh discussions with us. Um, it shall be in such a location and character in general that will be in harmony. And appropriate and orderly development within the district which it's located in, and I think uh Ron and the architect kind of talked about how it. Integrated into the existing campus as well as uh the existing buildings it was attached to. Um. Then, uh, excuse me, uh. The rest of it relates to uh locations of buildings, proposed facilities, parkings, driveways, parking areas um within uh. It requires a site plan that shows that, which they do pretty much on every application they do. Um. So staff feels it does uh comport with the conditional use criteria and uh we're in favor of uh. The conditional use authorization. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to ha- to answer them, or as you well know, in your master plan studies, our conditional use criteria. Could use some buffing up uh in the future, so. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, so.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions of Mr. Bridger? All that was. Really good to get put on the record. Um, anything to add, Mr. Weisman or Mr. Dobramilsky?
I have nothing there.
Okay.
Likewise, I'm good.
Great. Um. In that case, I or and while we've heard a lot from Mr. Scoopian. I know he said the the only professional I haven't called on again, but I think that uh I think we have um exhausted the. Uh, stormwater issues or or addressed them, I should say, not exhausted them. Um, so any uh. Is is there a member of the board interested in? Making a motion, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I'd be happy to move approval. I think I'd love to hear Jerry go through the conditions, um just to make sure that we know. Uh, what we're approving, but I think it's a, it's a great application.
Right, so the relief that they're seeking and and what the motion should go, should cover, and I assume it does, David. Is preliminary and final site plan approval, conditional use or authoris- conditional use authorization. The two um variances for the the two extra signs. Um, and the design waiver with respect to the stormwater management system that we discussed at length earlier. Uh, and then a set of conditions which I can start going through now.
I will, I will second uh Councilman Cohen's motion.
Thank you, perfect.
Pending review of the conditions and memoranda.
Great. Go ahead, Mr. Mueller.
Yeah, the first one, um, Dan Weisman laid this out at the beginning. I'm not sure I got it completely right. And first, I'm going to go through my uh my notes, but I only have a couple of notes, uh and then I'll go through the reports and the response. Um, the applicant should work with the staff on mitig- on a mitigation plan. Subject to staff approval, uh obviously staff would have to approve the plan, and it has to be approved prior to. Uh Dan Weisman, was that compliance submission? Or the compl- compliance review finished?
Prior to the adoption of the resolution.
Prior to the adoption, okay.
Which is, which we usually do in a month, but whether the university can. Um, complete the compliance plan and the regular timeframe is, I guess, up to them.
Right, then the other thing, we didn't talk about this, but what we've often often done for the university is provide for an early start. Um, before the res- resolution is is approved. Are you looking for that?
Yes, yes, I was gonna raise that. Thanks, Jerry, I appreciate.
Okay, anybody have any issues with that? Okay, and then um I'm going to go through the um. All the staff and and advisory body uh. Uh, reports, as I say, in conjunction with the response document, and I'll do in the order of these response documents, so that starts with the environmental commission.
But Jerry, if you can just, you know. Go go directly to can do recommended conditions of approval and on. Sort of their gen- you know, they often have a a large number of general recommendations, but. I don't think most of them are things that we're talking about conditioning the application on.
Now, did the plans, uh Ron, show uh bird-safe glass or is that something you intend to do?
They they testified.
Uh, we will, yes, we will provide book bird-safe glass on the new building and the existing building.
Okay, and I'll uh make that a condition. Um, then eh the environmental commission um. Propose increasing the permeable paving areas um and uh. And you've already.
Which they did.
You've already done that at plans, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. That's just the environmental commission. Okay, the next is for the um. Shadree Commission. And the only thing I have for the Shadree Commission is that standard uh condition we have about the um tree protective zone, they already. Have details and their plans about it, but I think we should add that as well. Okay. Then for the um engineering zoning report, there's just a couple. New drainage manholes and three sanitary manholes within the limits of bio-retention basin two. The applicant should install watertight manhole covers on these structures to prevent infiltration during heavy storm events. Okay?
Yeah.
And board members should should yell if you want to discuss something or you don't think it's a good idea, and I would suggest the same thing for Christopher and Ron. Um, then the standard stuff about the uh the applicant. Shall estimate a cost estimate for all site improvements and public improvements subject to review and proof of the land use engineer. In order to determine the amount required for performance guarantee and inspection fees. Um, and then um. Agency approvals that may be required, first kind of planning board, so conservation district, Dean, our canal commission. Princeton Sewer Department, Stony Brook, uh NJDEP Treatment Works. And NJDEP Construction Activity General Stormwater Permit. And that's it, like. For that um memo. Then um Joe Scoopian's memo.
And and Jerry, just to clarify, our responses were to the initial memo he provided in.
Yeah, I know.
And I believe Dan Weisman put together a very uh detailed condition that was designed to address it.
You mean the one I I took, the first one I articulated? Okay, Joe, does, would that cover everything?
Joe, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm muted?
No, not you, Jerry, Joe.
Oh.
And you were, you asked it, no. No, no, thankfully, we have all been hearing you.
There were two conditions in my report, uh, one of them may cover the uh the need for the waiver. Uh, and the mitigation plan, uh just adding Dan's requirement to that, that my comment number one, which is the mitigation plan. Needs to be resolved prior to resolution approval. And then comment number two is it is again, it's a a detail that needs to be addressed, but that can be addressed, you know, during compliance.
Yep, a- and one, um, we're going to draw, we're going to articulate using that um. Language that Dan Weisman suggested and I read earlier, and then the the second one, which will. Uh, add computations should be provided to demonstrate that the proposed project site. Storms can convey their peak one hundred year storm runoff rates without overflow and bypassing. And bypassing the downstream systems intended to convey this runoff to the proposed subsurface detention basin in Poe and Party Field. Now, in the um. Response by the uh. Uh, by the app, by the university's um consultant, they they uh did not agree to that, and um. Let me see if I can find that.
Just, Mr. Muller.
Yeah.
Uh, to to say, no, we we will provide those computations. We were just, we were saying how we were going to be providing those.
So that's good.
No, not not that we didn't agree with it, no.
Great. And then for Dan Dobramilsky's um. His his paragraph number eight says, he just wants clarification on the number of trees to be removed.
They did that in the testimony, Jerry, so I don't know if we need to make it.
Okay, that's fine, that's great. And then um. Mr. Anasikis, and we went over some of these before, maybe there's no more that we have to uh go over. Um, we went over the question of, he raised a question about increasing in uh student population driving this and I think. Uh, then. A calculation of the required and proposed bicycle parking shall be provided for the proposed development, including all the assumptions. If any made in the calculation and uh and rationale that they were based upon. The amounts of long-term versus uh short-term parking per the schedule requirements and orders, ordinance section cited are to be provided. Um, and I know you uh addressed that as well in the um. In the response document, um. Christopher, what's what's your reaction to that and what you?
Are you talking about the bike?
Yes.
No, yes, yeah, we we submit that report. Um, annually that will include the expansion here and the additional bikes, but. If you look at the numbers, we're going from, what is it, like fifty to a hundred, and you know, it's. We're, we we have more than enough here to accommodate.
Right, and is the board member is comfortable with the idea that this is going to be really addressed as part of the report they do annually?
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, that's that's absolutely um. What I I I actually shared that comment with staff before the meeting.
Oh, fine, it's good. Okay. Um, then there's a question about the fire truck backing up a hundred and fifty feet or more along Gio um. Uh, lane, um.
I feel like if that's not something that the fire marshal flagged as a problem.
Right.
Um, I mean, I understand and respect uh that it was raised in the traffic report, but I think we should. Defer to the fire marshal on. What's a problem and what's not for for fire uh. Equipment, and if anybody disagrees with me, please speak up, because I'm.
Okay.
That, I would just point out that that movement was part of the university health services application, was approved as part of that application.
Okay.
So given that, do we need to do anything further? I I don't know that we do.
Don't think so.
Okay. And the the access door uh in that one area that was addressed by the university during a testimony. Um. Construction detail of the proposed long-term bicycle parking facility should be provided. Um. Bear with me.
And here's a quick question for the university, is bike, is bike and scooter parking basically co? I mean, it's the same.
Yes, same uh same source, right?
Okay, um. Then there was that stop bar, Mr. Anasiki talked about that earlier. Um, and the he wanted confirmation that access to the emergency vehicle parking spaces will be maintained after construction. Of the uh Gio Lane modifications. And university, that's okay with the university?
Yes, 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 during and after, yes.
Yep. And the traffic signal we talked about. And, okay, the site plan should be revised, this is his paragraph thirteen should be revised to connect. This curb ramp um southwest corner intersection of Ivy and and Washington Road. Connect the curb ramp via an accessible sidewalk to the other nearby pedestrian facilities, you might have.
Yes, we're gonna, we're, we have to revise our drawings and we will do that.
Okay. And then. Um. The site plans, this is Mr. Uh Anasiki. Uh, indicated placement several curb ramps at roadway crossings with marked crosswalks. Um, and then. Curb ramp details should be provided for those crosswalks. Um, and they have to comply with the the federal public rights of way accessibility guidelines. And um the suggestion by Mr. Anasiki was that the site plans should be revised to provide, to provide the appropriate details, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second um with the. Conditions just described um. By Mr. Mueller and agreed to at the university, uh I think we are ready for a roll call, Carrie.
Thank you. Ms. Capazoli? Yes. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Zarni?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours.
Um, thank you.
Um, re- repeat all the great comments people made, but it was a good, good conversation. It's a great project. We look forward to. Seeing it happen. When is the expected completion date?
This one is down the road because we have some, um, we have to make sure the building is clean before we start. Uh, you know, the construction, so we're currently estimating two twenty twenty-nine.
Ah, okay. Well, it's not like you don't have a lot of other stuff going on.
Yeah, too bad, too bad you have to put it off when you have nothing else to do. Ron, I wondered, it, obviously, the board finds the concept review helpful. Does the university? Feel that presenting concept plans is helpful for. It, and it's helpful with the eventual application?
It very much so, it really, it's a really great chance to have a conversation um and get early feedback so that we can work on it after, after concept. Before we submit.
Good, good to hear.
But it, but it's also tied to the size and scale of the project, so it, the project needs to be significant. But it, but it's also tied to the size and scale of the project, so it, the project needs to be significant enough. Not just like a, adding a accessible ramp or something like that, you know.
Sure.
Good. Okay, um, thanks, everybody. Mr. Cohen?
I'm going to exercise my responsibility, and referred to earlier, move to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, thanks again, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, good night.
Good night.